Good evening and welcome to the February 10th meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals here at Falmouth Town Hall. Calling the meeting board and ask everyone to please silence their cellphones at this time. I'll introduce the board, starting on my far right. Your far left is Jerry Patanis, who is an associate member of the board. To his left is James Morse, who is a full voting member. To my right is Scott Solinsky, who is the board's vice chair. My name is TJ Horry. I'm the chair of the board. To my left is Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk. To his left is Scott Peterson, who is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary for the night. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants, from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The board, I'm sorry, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. Board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should be directed only at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor, in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair. Come to the podium over there to the left. We ask you to please state your name and address for the record. We also limit public comment to two minutes per person. And while everyone is speaking tonight, we do ask you to speak clearly into the microphone and stay behind the podium while you're speaking, and that microphone is meant for those watching at home on FCTV. It doesn't have any amplification, thank you.
You're welcome.
Doesn't have any amplification purposes in this room. As for closing or continuing the hearing, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. Any alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date in time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. Regarding board discussions and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves. We would make a motion to deny or approve that would be made and voted upon. Such a motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. Turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment, followed by one continuation, four new hearings, and we have a few items on our open meeting agenda list. So up first is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So again, if you're here wishing to speak on a project, just wait for the appropriate time in the evening, and we'll address it then. But for now, is anyone out there with anything to say for something that is not on the agenda? Tony Moynihan?
Thank you, Lauren Moynihan, Falmouth attorney. I wanted to comment on the 40B violation issues just briefly. I know you have something that looks fairly similar on your agenda, but I thought if you would rather me wait, I can, but I'd just take a couple of minutes to give you some thoughts about, having worked in that, this area for 20-plus years, I see firsthand why these violations are occurring and have a couple of suggestions on maybe how to curb that. Would you like me to proceed?
Sure, why don't you go ahead.
So, the typical areas that I see are the construction plans. When they get to the construction plan phase, they can vary from the plans that you've approved. That's because the detail and the money isn't going into the plans until they get the 40B approval. At that stage, you do see variations. Sometimes it's overlooked that those have to come back to you. So that's one area that I see a lot. There's a time lapse from when the comprehensive permit is issued and construction starts. There's a thousand details that the developer deals with in between. Sometimes years go by. So there is, has to be a refamiliarization process with the permit itself. There's also the practice on 40A projects of construction field changes, where somebody is getting a building permit for a non-40B project. They're out in the field, they make a change, the building inspector or some other town agency inspects, and says, "Okay, don't worry about it, that's fine." Those field changes, some contractors feel that that's appropriate for them to do that with 40B permits. So sometimes these things are not intentional, sometimes they can be, but sometimes they're not. I think the goal should be, rather than talking about how we issue violation orders, maybe focus on how we stop these things from happening in the first place. And a couple of suggestions are, one is to strengthen the condition in the comprehensive permits about minor deviations to plans being approved by the zoning board. Put in express language, field changes are not permitted. Any change to the plans, contact the zoning administrator. I mean, just beef up that condition so that people reading it really do understand that even the most minor change, that something that they might otherwise get approved by an inspector in the field is not the practice with 40B permits. Develop maybe a contractor certification at the building permit stage, where the contractor and the developer sign a certification that they have reviewed the conditions of the comprehensive permit, they understand those conditions, and they will comply with them. So again, this could be two, three years later. You're forcing the issue of actually having the guy who's out in the field, or the gal who's out in the field, reading each one of those conditions and understanding what they say. And I see that that often gets overlooked with the builder itself. Also, the developer can be intimately familiar with the conditions, but the contractor may not be. So that kind of certification process before issuance of a building permit is going to get that knowledge out there. An architect's certification as well, that the construction plans, as presented to the building department, match the approved plans. That's where you're going to get, if you have to get an architect to sign on the dotted line, you're going to get the deviations noted. And then you have a modification at that stage, rather than when somebody's looking for an architect, or a occupancy permit. The zoning board requests that other town departments, water, sewer, conservation, health, that they advise people that when they're coming to them based on those separate permits, for water connection, sewer connection, whatever it is, that if they're going to make changes, they need to check with the zoning administrator. That seems to be something that falls by the wayside. And lastly, invite the developer to come to the zoning board, you know, six months after the construction starts, and give you a status report. You know, that's going to create some accountability there, if the developer and builder know that they have to come and tell you what's happening, rather than you finding out later on. Anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you, attorney Moynihan. Anyone else with public comment, not related to anything on the agenda tonight? Anyone at all? All right, moving on. Up first, first continuation of the night, or the only continuation we have, is number 85-21, Seacoast Tower Development LLC, 50 Highfield Drive in Falmouth. Requesting a special permit to remove the existing guide tower and replace with a new tower. Extending antennas and equipment will be transferred to the replacement tower. Voting members on this project are myself, Scott Solinsky, Bob Dugan, James Morse, and Jerry Patanis.
And Mr. Chairman, since our last meeting, they did do the crane test. I know the members were going to go up to see the crane test. They also submitted photos of the crane test in the balloon, again verifying what the heights would be. Other than that, the only other submittal right now is a letter. It was received February 10th, and this is from the Highfield Hillside Townhouse Condominium Trust. And it's their abutter response to the applicant on permit number 85-21, special permit modification hearing, Seacoast Tower Development LLC, 50 Highfield Drive, Falmouth. Dear Attorney, Payer, this letter is formal response to your correspondence dated 12/16/2021. Our post-hearing meeting and email exchanges, the applicant's effort to document existing radio frequency emissions, as well as your coordination of the crane test to illustrate the proposed replacement tower height and site placement. These undertakings have been helpful to better understand the project's implications, but questions and concerns remain. One, the applicant should provide certification of the existing tower height as required by condition number two of the Falmouth ZBA special permit modification appeal number 140-98 decision, recorded in book 11921, page 132, on 12/16/1998, and that's attached. A, neither the zoning board or the building department have a copy of this certification. B, we ask if the existing tower height had been certified. Your letter dated 12/16/2021 states, "Please see plan stamped by our professional engineer verifying the height. We reviewed the reference plans titled South Coast Tower, A and E Tower Replacement, CDs 121421 REV6. We see no such height certification, meaning a representation of the existing tower height. Additionally, sheet A2 Elevations and Details inaccurately depicts the existing and proposed towers side by side with the height benchmarks out of alignment. This rendering suggests that the proposed tower will be lower and softens the visual difference of the towers. The existing tower 174-foot line is above the proposed tower 175-foot line. C, identifying the original tower height, which was not to exceed 160, AGL 1978, and the 20-foot tower tight extension in 1998, are critical to understand if this project should be referred to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact, DRI. A digital survey is required. Two, special permit application 85-21 asserts that the facility will have no negative impact on property values in the area. Two, the facility will not adversely impact adjacent properties and neighborhoods. Three, the facility will not be a threat to public health, safety, and welfare. A, the crane test demonstrates that the combination of the increased height, larger antenna array mass, and relocated site will have a significantly greater visual impact on the abutting properties and thus will negatively impact property values, as well as pose a threat to health. B, the existing and proposed tower photo simulations PDF document dated 127/2022, created by Advanced Engineering Group, AEG, on behalf of the applicant, fail to illustrate the impact of the proposed tower, or to fairly represent the proposed tower height and mass as would be realized by the abutter properties and neighborhoods. C, the applicant should provide existing and proposed likenesses of the attached abutter crane test photos exhibit. Similarly, to view number two in the AEG photo PDF, this would be more accurately and fairly depict the proposed replacement tower. I believe this exercise would clearly illustrate that the proposed tower height and lattice antenna array size will negatively impact the character of the neighborhood and have a detrimental result for nearby property values and potential health of abutting residents. D, sheet A1 Plan View included in the previously referenced plan provides a sketch of the existing tower antenna array while the proposed tower only lines sketch of the base and peak dimensions. The proposed self-supporting tower should be included in the planned lattice antenna array. This would properly contrast the bulk difference between the existing and proposed towers. E, I vehemently disagree with your 12/16/2021 letter assertion that there will be no negative impact on property values in the area. See attached excerpt, "My 20 years of experience as a real estate professional, 16 years as a Massachusetts licensed real estate salesperson, currently expired, tells me that constructing the much larger and taller proposed tower in a new onsite location will negatively impact both property values and adversely impact the neighborhood's visual character. Simply put, our view will change from a forest to a trellis antenna array with an as-of-yet undefined head size or qualitative rendered depiction. F, further, we suggest the proposed tower location be moved to an alternative location on the property to avoid negative visual impacts on the residential abutters. Installing the replacement tower on the north side of the existing tower may eliminate the visual and sensory impacts the abutting properties. See attached sheet A1 Snapshot Exhibit for review. Three, we appreciate your looking into and attempting to assist with the roadway trenching damage and needing asphalt repairs. The damage was the result of a Seacoast Tower Development tenant contractor, whose work included trenching from a pole at the Falmouth Bus Station across the bike path, first cut across paved Highfield Drive, a trench along the south side of Highfield Drive, just past number 44 Highfield, into a vault, and then second cut across paved Highfield Drive. The driveway at 45 Highfield Drive was also damaged during the work. A, the roadway should not have been saw cut, trenched, and then improperly patched. The contractor was working on behalf of Seacoast Tower Development tenant, and we believe this damage should be repaired correctly. These requested and needed repairs will benefit all the Highfield Drive property owners, including the tower landlord, Cape Cod Conservatory. B, we are concerned that the T-Mobile letter of intent and the AT&amp;T letter of intent provided and a third wireless company being that is being courted by the applicant will result in more communication infrastructure work along Highfield Drive. We would like assurances from any future underground cabling and associated work will occur in a good neighbor manner. Alternative methods to bisect the roadway should be employed, the example mole-style horizontal boring and trenching. Roadside planting should be restored, disturbed soils should be hydrocedic for erosion control, and trees should be planted if removed or damaged. Thank you for reviewing these remaining concerns and continuing to work with the abutters. We trust the applicant can design a successful project that complies with height restrictions and doesn't unfavorably and unnecessarily impact our property values and the character of the neighborhood. And that is signed Miles Ostroff." He says, "On behalf of the abutters collectively known as Highfield Hillside Townhouse Condominium Trust and Highfield Hillside Neighborhood Association," he did CC, honorable members of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, Noreen Stockman, Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals Administrator, and Ashley DeMello, Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals Office Assistant. In the letterhead does say, "Highfield Hillside Townhouse Condominium Trust, Miles Ostroff, trustee." And that's all we have.
All right, thank you, Bob. And before we get underway, I do see some people out back there. We do have a few seats available, two up front. There might be one or two back there as well. Just wanted to make sure that we got everyone in here that we can.
You may want to ask if they're here for the tower hearing.
Sure. So those in the hallway, are you here for this specific hearing right now?
No.
No? Okay. Anyone else out there? All right. All right. We'll get underway then.
Good evening. My name is Edward Paree. It's P-A-R-E. I'm an attorney of Brown Rudnick, and I'm here representing Seacoast Tower Development. Just a quick refresher, because it's probably been almost two months. We were here on December 16th, presented our application to rebuild an existing guide tower, which means it's, you know, one of those towers that has guy wires and guy anchors to keep the tower up and steady. As I mentioned during the first hearing, the carriers that are currently located on that tower cannot modify and upgrade their systems. So there's been a long time frustration, the guide towers are not built for the new wireless installations. So the owner thought it'd be wise to accommodate those wireless carriers and rebuild the tower approximately 40 feet away from where it currently exists. We would build a self-supporting tower so we could get rid of the guy wires and the guy anchors. We're a little bit surprised with the level of abutter concern at the last hearing, as I mentioned. So we agreed to undertake a number of studies. One, we agreed to perform actual readings of the emissions. I know that was a concern of some of the abutters. That report, that testing was actually done the day of the hearing. I've subsequently filed a report with the board. You should have it in your packets. And the conclusion is that currently the emissions maximum and actuels are 4.24%. So that's 4.24% of the FCC maximum, which would be 100%. As I mentioned, these antennas are up pretty high on the tower, so the energy is directed towards the horizon and sort of in a flashlight depiction. The energy reaches the ground, but it's very low energy. So we fully comply with the FCC requirements. The other concern that was raised was the visibility of the tower. So we agreed with the board to conduct a crane test. The first date that we had, January 8th, we snowed out, so we had to reschedule to the 22nd. I made everyone aware of the rescheduling, including the planning board members through Ashley and the abutters. So this is the result of the crane test. I'll just walk through some of these photos, and again, your packets have, should have these photographs in them. The star at the center is the proposed tower location. And what we do is we, you're probably going to have to take a look at the pictures, but what we do is we drive a crane to the location of the proposed tower, and we bring the crane up to 180 feet, which is the proposed height. We did attach a balloon to the top, so just for reference points, the bottom of the balloon is at 190 feet, and the top of the crane, if you can see it, is at 180 feet. So that'll be the proposed height of the tower. The existing tower right next to it, because it's only 40 feet away, is 170 feet. So I'm going to go back to the, we're just going to run through the locations where the crane is visible, and as I said, we would digitize the look of the tower once the tower was constructed. So I'm going to run through these. So this is a view from Palmer Avenue. You can see the top of the crane here and the existing guy wire, guy tower. As I mentioned, that guy tower will come down if this is approved by the board and This is the lattice tower, using the crane as the reference point with the antennas attached with the guy tower digitized out. This is view two from Palmer Avenue and Depot Avenue, and you can see guy tower and the Again, with the guy tower removed and the lattice tower replaced where the crane was. This is from Bramble Bush Drive, which is kind of due north, quite a ways away, as you can see. And again, the crane and the existing tower. Lastly, we just took some photographs where the tower will not be visible, Palmer Avenue and Jones Road. And these views are listed on the overlay map on the first page. Southeast on Depot. Locust and Mill. Green Gate. Two Points Road, none of which are visible utilizing the crane. There are some locations nearby, the entranceway to the site. Obviously, you'll be able to see the tower once it's constructed, but in that instance, we have the property owner's okay and letter of support for the proposed installation. So I think a 10-foot, 10-foot extension to an existing guy tower, based on the results of the crane test, does not significantly impact the visibility. As I acknowledged, when we scheduled the crane test with the board on the 16th, we do not go on private property to take photographs, so these are from public roads where the public would be impacted. I've acknowledged that if you look through the trees, that you can, you'd be able to see the tower from, you know, specific locations, and I think some of the condo owners may have taken shots, which we encourage, from their own properties. The other key issue that we said we would deal with are real estate values. So we have a real estate appraiser, George Valentine, who works with us from time to time. He's here to testify. He does have a report, which we can submit for the record. I know the board's not keen on receiving late filings, but on the other hand, it was raised in the letter, so I'll have George testify, which is what we intended to do. And if the board will receive his report, we can submit that. George?
Attorney Perry, what's the reason for the late submittal of these?
We would have George testify. The letter that came in from the abutters specifically raising issues with respect to real estate, so we have also a written report to supplement that. But George can testify and be questioned.
You have one more for the final. I'll use this one, it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So George, if you could just provide your background to the members of the zoning board, with your education, your experience, and your licensing, and then you can go through your findings. We're limited on time, so stick to the facts.
Okay. My name is George Valentine. I'm a certified general real estate appraiser in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. I've been appraising residential and commercial properties for over 25 years. The applicant requested that I take a look at this situation here and determine if there was any potential impact on the property values. The methodology we use to do that is called apparent sales analysis, where we look at properties in close proximity to cell towers that have sold, and then find properties of very similar nature and compare the sale prices to see if there's any diminution in value based on the proximity to the cell tower. So my first effort was to observe Falmouth Towers, of which there are about five. There are two on Thomas Leonard's Road, but that's really not a residential area. There's the 500-foot radio tower in T-Ticket, and that, you know, everybody can see it, but it's, there's no, there was no evidence in one way or the other that it has any impact. In my research, I contacted the town assessor and asked her if she had ever had any requests for abatements due to proximity to a cell tower where it had impacted the property, and she says she's never had a request, and she said they'd have to bring evidence, and she just, you know, she did not think that there would be any issue with regard to that. But the subject property is located 400 feet from the Highfield condominiums, and there was a sale in 2019 of unit three, which sold for $612,000. And there was a sale in 2019 of unit three, which sold for $612,000. So I did a general comparison in condominium sales for 2019 in Falmouth. And let me just find that page. The result is that the average price per square foot for condominiums in Falmouth in 2019 in that size range, comparable properties, was $250 a square foot. And condo, unit number three at the subject property sold for $253 a foot. So there's really no evidence at all that there was an impact from the 170-foot tower for the Highland High Field Drive. And I've been doing this for a long time. I've looked at a lot of towers and the increase from 170 to 180 is about 5%. And in my professional experience, I just don't believe that that will have any impact on value at all. I've included some additional studies from other towns in New England in the back, just as a reference point. But it's my professional opinion that this will not change the character of the neighborhood or impact property values.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Likewise, I do have one additional document. It's a one-page document, the letter from the abutters that I received at 10 o'clock this morning in response to our December 16th letter. Again, questioned the height of the existing tower. And I explained to them that our civil engineer, licensed professional engineer, had submitted plans and stamped those plans. Apparently, that was not adequate, so I asked our civil engineer again to produce a certification that says the height of the existing tower is 170 feet. And with the board's concurrence, I'll hand in that one page, again, in an attempt to satisfy issues raised by some of the abutters, if I could.
Hand it to the clerk, please.
You know, since the last meeting, we did attempt to work in good faith with the abutters.
Mr. Chair, just to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I, I just want to read this in, just so the people that submitted the letter, because I'm sure you don't-
Sure, I think that's fair.
Just so they know what the response was to the tower. So again, this is from AEG Advanced Engineering Group, PC, dated February 10th, 2022, regarding existing tower height certification. Seacoast Tower, High Field Drive, 50 High Field Drive, Falmouth, Mass. Dear ZBA Board, in my client's request, this office has produced this tower height certification letter in response to recent public input. The purpose of this certification is to establish compliance of the existing tower and to provide evidence that the existing tower height of 170 feet AGL plus or minus has been confirmed by several different means and by several different A&amp;E firms. It should be noted that the Advanced Engineering Group, PC, has performed site work, engineering documents, surveys, and design drawings for multiple carriers at this site for several years. Information reviewed includes, but not limited to, a field survey performed by Advanced Engineering Group on 4-1-2020 confirms the existing tower height of 170 feet AGL. The tower structure analysis report performed by T-Mobile, prepared by Advanced Engineering Group, PC, prepared on 7-8-2014, confirms existing tower height of 170 feet. Tower structural analysis performed for Sprint, prepared by EBI Consulting, prepared 1-6-2012, confirms existing tower height of 170 feet. The tower structural analysis performed by Sprint, prepared by Chapel Engineering Associates, LLC, prepared on 5-12-2014, confirms existing tower height of 170 feet. The tower structural analysis performed by Nextel, prepared for All Points Technology Corporation, PC, prepared on February 7th, 2007, confirms existing tower height of 170 feet. The FAA 2C certification letter, performed by Sprint Nextel Communications, prepared by Duberry Inc., prepared on October 11th, 2006, confirms the existing tower height of 170 feet. Therefore, based on our review of the information noted above and site field measures taken by AEG, I, Scott N. Adams, licensed professional engineer, number 46006, hereby certify, to the best of my knowledge, information, and belief, that the existing tower height is 170 feet plus or minus AGL. Again, very truly yours, Scott N. Adams, PE. And it does contain his certification stamp.
All right, thank you for reading that in, Bob.
Thank you. The last issue, I think we, the abutters raised was dealing with some trenching that occurred somewhere four, maybe five or six years ago. So as I said, in good faith, we did reach out to the carriers to see who may have undertaken that work. I didn't get any information, whether it was AT&amp;T or any of the other carriers that are currently located on the tower. AT&amp;T put me in touch with the vendor that did the work so that we could follow up further. They didn't have any record of undertaking the work. I suggested to the abutters that they reach out to that company. They chose not to do so. So I'm not sure who did the work, how it was left, but in discussions with the owner of Seacoast, we are in fact willing to make those repairs, whether they were caused on behalf of Seacoast or one of Seacoast tenants. As a good faith gesture, we'll make the repairs when we're up there undertaking the work. Obviously, we can't do it in the winter, and I don't think the abutters were suggesting that it had to be done immediately, but we are, you know, certainly willing to take a reasonable condition as part of an approval that will make the necessary repairs up to, you know, a commercial standard, as though we're a public road. With that, that closes out our presentation. I think we've addressed all of the issues. We have worked with the abutters. We're looking for a 10-foot extension of a obsolete guy tower. We comply with the zoning bylaw. We comply with the Cape Cod Commission requirements. We comply with the FCC standards. The alternative is to introduce a new tower, which I don't think anybody wants to do. And that's the whole purpose of the Cape Cod Commission exemption, is to say, look, you have an existing tower, it has an impact, you can build it up to 20 feet higher. And as I mentioned in my initial presentation, the, we're aware that the initial approval at 160, that the tower went to 170, which this board approved, a 20-foot extension, but it was only extended 10 feet. So we're only looking for the incremental 10 feet in accordance with the Cape Cod Commission. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions of the board or any from the public. Mr. Chair?
Sure. Start on that, Jerry, go ahead.
The complaint was that a saw cut was done, which I'm not sure, that used to be acceptable, rather than taking a backhoe and just digging up the asphalt. So how are you going to repair a saw cut that's been asphalt repaired? That was one. Maybe I didn't, when I was out there, I didn't notice how bad the road was. And two was, whose responsibility in the future, if you put new vendors, new lines, would you accept a condition that says they have to be tunneled?
Have to be what?
Tunnelled. It's not open cut, it's just bored. Bored or tunneled, I think that's the direction.
Yeah, I mean, I think whatever, I'm not an engineer, so I can't tell you what, you know, is involved in that, but, you know, whatever the typical means of doing underground is fine. I mean, I think we would just want to be treated as any, say, public road or utility installation along a public road, say, in Neesmond. So if the town requires boring, then that's the way we do it. If we come overhead, we come overhead, but any reasonable condition, we're not going to be opposed to. We just want to be treated the same as everybody else. I don't know if, I don't know if boring is special, I guess that's my-
It's more expensive, in my view.
If that's what the town requires, I, I don't know if everything's over, if everything's underground here, but whatever methodology the town requires, we'll deal with it.
In my experience, we've done it for some sewer lines. They do it occasionally for, depending what neighborhood you go in. So it's acceptable engineering technology, I'm not going to, you know, I just know the neighbors were concerned about it, and you appeared to think it's reasonable.
Anything else, Jerry?
No, thank you.
James?
No questions at this time, may have something after public comment.
Sure. Scott?
Yes, sir. Attorney Perry, in part of your previous testimony, you had mentioned emissions calculations on the existing conditions?
Yep.
All right, so those are hard, those are hard numbers and calculations that you can provide.
I did provide.
Okay.
Yes.
How can you provide what's not there yet?
So we can't. So what I said is that we have the existing, the carriers have not even designed their systems to attach to the tower. So once the tower is approved and constructed, they'll each come in for their own permits and have to show that they comply.
After you get your permit?
Correct.
How, that's, that's after the fact. What if they exceed what's presently there?
Well, they can't. That's, they can't report to the town that they exceed because they're not allowed to. So we don't have a design for a full buildout, because right now, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile are both operating. So this shows you, even with everybody up there right now, it's at 4%. When they move over to the new tower, they again will have to comply and they'll have to document for the town what the proposed and hypothetical, but up, until they're up and operating, you can't measure it. But they do have to comply with the FCC standards, no matter what, whether they don't want to or whether this board says, well, they can, they can't.
And that's doable?
Easily.
With all the contracts you have lined up for all the carriers that are going, that are going on this, what if we come to the point where-
Easily.
Everybody, and you assure us of that, that they'll be the same or lower emissions than what's there?
Well, it's not, it may not be lower, but it's going to be less than 100%. So we're at, we're at 4% operating currently, the carriers. I mean, we're a tower company. Carriers are at 4%. When they change, that may go up, it's not going to go to 100. It can't go over 100. And the town can require documentation to show that when they attach, they don't exceed. And each one of them can only add so much. They're never going to come close to 100, not on a tower.
And part of your testimony about the damage to the road, kind of piggybacking off of Mr. Potamus's question.
Yep.
You had asserted that you guys would accept responsibility for the repairs. Does that mean only if you get the, the project goes forward, you'll accept the repairs? I mean, that, forgive me, but that's how it sounded.
Well, I think what you would want to do is to impose a condition on us that we do the repairs.
I'm just asking a simple question.
Right, if, so if it's a-
Are you going to do it either way? Are you going to fix the road either way, now that the damage has already been done and you've assumed responsibility for it?
Well, you're talking about something that was done six years ago.
Huh?
Right.
You said it, not me.
We haven't had that discussion with the abutters as to whether we would fix the road if this wasn't approved. The way to get it, get us to fix it is to make it a condition. So we're not saying we're promising to do it, make it a condition, and we, that we have no choice.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Bob, anything?
It's, it's a little off the subject, but so the current tower looks like it had an osprey nest on it?
It had a what?
The top. The current tower has showed signs that there was an osprey nest at one time, and that's common down here with these big towers.
Yep.
So what's your, how do they handle that on the new towers?
Well, yeah, we can't disturb an active nest, so we'll have to wait to the off-season to do any removal or to deal with any demolition of the tower. Same thing with the new to, with the new tower. I mean, the, if there's a nest up at the top, which is where they usually form on a, on one of the antenna platforms, then, you know, there's a dark time where you can't do anything with the tower.
That's my other question.
All right. Scott?
Just a follow-up, and again, I know you're not the engineer here or the expert on the-
We haven't.
Exposure limits, but are there any goalposts that you could give us, as Mr. Zelensky was trying to outline? You're at 4.2% today. You can go to 100. Obviously, AT&amp;T and others have been putting in similar systems elsewhere. Isn't there any kind of idea where that might fall out?
It'll never be close, if it's a, if it's a 160-foot tower, I've been doing this for 24, 25 years, it'll never come close to 100. When I say close, I haven't seen it exceed 50, fully loaded, all four carriers. Because the idea is that the, the energy dissipates, so it's not that the antenna's shooting down at any particular area, it's shooting out, so that the energy kind of trickles to the ground and that's where the phone hooks up. So the, I don't think I've ever seen a report above 50 in all the time I've been doing this, fully loaded towers.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, that's good.
Mr. Perry, forgive me again.
Yep.
So the existing conditions are 4%.
The actual measurements, we had somebody go out with, not a hypothetical, with an instrument to measure the emissions, they're at 4%.
Okay, but you keep saying every time we ask the question, what might it be, you keep, they're going to be under 100. So if the neighbors are concerned with emissions, don't you think it would be responsible to be able to give them as much information as close as you could to what you think they would be, so they can calculate how much more emissions are going to be on the new one that are on the one that is existing? They're living with the one that it's existing.
Correct.
They don't know what the new emissions are going to be, because you can't tell us, but we know it's under 100. I'm trying to get you to give me some kind of ballpark of how much more than 4% and under 100 do you think this will be?
Well, if you're asking me what I think, it'll be less than 50% of the maximum. I just, I just stated that. None of the carriers that are going to attach are going, have their antenna designed yet. I mean, the tower is still in development. Once they decide how many antennas we're putting across, the type of antennas and the frequencies used, they'll be, we can then come up with a hypothetical model of what the emissions will be. So if AT&amp;T, if, if three of the carriers go up, we can provide a similar report based on the antennas, the energy input, the energy output, as to what the emissions are expected to be.
But you're unwilling to do that prior to, on a permit approval?
We don't have the antennas designed yet. These antennas are all closely mounted to the existing, so if I was here doing the full buildout, I would have that information. Right now, AT&amp;T is waiting for us to see if they're going to move to the new tower. If this doesn't get built, AT&amp;T is going to go do something somewhere, because what's happening at the guy tower is limiting what they can do.
Are you aware of how much public opposition in the area is to the emissions?
Well, that's an interesting, I think I mentioned in the first hearing, that the emissions are regulated by the FCC. And with due respect, nothing to do with local boards, nothing to do with state government. The FCC mandates and limits the emissions. It's set at 100%. We have, I guess, two of these three carriers operate. We're, we're at 4%. I've never seen one over 50 on a tower, so-
But you can't go to 100% or even more on the existing tower, right? So you have to have a new tower to be able to extend the emissions that go in, that go into that area, correct?
No, we can't add any, none of the carriers can add equipment to the existing tower.
That's what I'm saying. The abutters are concerned with emissions, okay? They know what they have now, that, it might be important for them to have, and I know you keep telling me you can't have that information, because you, you can't even design what you're proposing until you get approval of it. Well, you've got a roomful of people here that are concerned and would probably like the answer to that more succinctly than it'll be less than 100. That's where I'm, that's what I'm trying to get a handle on. If you have a butter or a public opposition to something, to a specific, in this case, it's emissions.
To, right, but to a 10-
The last thing they're going to want to hear is, I'm not sure. You have to build it first.
Wait, 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 no, I didn't say I'm not sure. I told you it'll be less than 100, because it has to be. And neither the abutters, or this board, or anybody else, except for the FCC, have jurisdiction. So we come in, we, if you want us to provide something to the building inspector when the carriers come in that they comply, you'd probably get that now. But that's something you could certainly ask before AT&amp;T is allowed to attach its antennas and operate. You can require a report from them saying, what, what are the added emissions going to be?
So that's the question I had for you, Mr. Perry. So let's say they came in at 50, and then a year or so down the road, there's a change in equipment, and now they're at 100. Even though they're at 100, the town has no purview whatsoever, they are allowed to go to 100.
That's correct.
So even if a butter had a concern that there is an increase in emissions, there is no way for this board or this town to limit anything less than 100?
That's, that's absolutely the state of the law. Blacklighter law, if, if the carriers, again, we, we don't admit, if the carriers are within- If the carriers are within the FCC guidelines, that's all they need to do. That's all they need to show any jurisdiction, and your building official can ask for that information. So we're not the ones that control that information. But when somebody comes in for a permit, maybe they have to come before this board for a permit, they would file, if, if I came in to co-locate on a tower, I would come in with our, my client's carrier hypothetical emission statement. And I would say, here, we expect this is going to be 2%. And you would get that because that's what you would be approving. In this instance, we're looking to get the tower approved. Subsequent applications will come through either before this board or the building official to show structural capacity, and if, you know, they have to comply with code. We, they do it all the time. And you can require it. Whether you do is something I don't know.
Any other follow-up questions from the board? Alright, we'll turn it over to public comments. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Sir? Yep, to the podium, sure.
Is it possible to utilize my laptop?
Uh-
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if it is.
Alright. We'll wait on that then.
Do you have a thumb drive you can download to and then?
I don't, I've got a different connections. We'll, we'll wait on that. Honorable board, staff members, thanks for this opportunity to express our concerns. My name is Miles Ostroff, a butter to the Seacoast Tower Development, 45 High Field Drive, Falmouth, Mass. 02540. First, I'd like to acknowledge the late nature of my letter being sent in. We are abutters, we all have busy lives like you do as well. Didn't have time to commit to this prior to the past couple nights to kind of read in and review the documents that have been shared. So I apologize for the late nature of that letter. I also apologize for member Dugan having to read that out loud, but he did a great job. Thank you. So, in summary, at first, I'd like to start off by saying we do appreciate the applicant's efforts to work with us and follow through on what they promised at the initial hearing, including providing the coordination of the crane test, which I think was extremely helpful. I'm sorry that I can't connect my laptop. I did include photos and I can share them digitally as well with the board, but the purpose of the crane test from, from our, from our position was to accurately represent what it would look like really in the neighborhood and the abutters. And I think what you see here in what was shared, and actually, maybe, who controls that? There's-
He can move it for you.
Oh, okay. So the point is, was to accurately depict what this new tower, standalone tower and lattice array would look like to the neighborhood, which includes their landlord, High Field Historic Hall, the Sports Center, Falmouth Academy, as well as 44 and 45 High Field Drive, which are, which are residential in nature. They provided distant views in most cases. And I think the one that's most relevant from their view is view number two, the proposed view. And what I really wished is that we could have gotten photos closer to where the tower is located to really show you what it would look like and what, what impact it would be for us. Because I think it would help not only illustrate the change in the visual nature and sort of feel of the neighborhood, but also would, I think, possibly sway the opinion of the appraiser on what this could mean for property values for, for the five of us as well as the other abutters. So I can get this to number two, view two proposed? I'm sorry.
Go, go right ahead.
I appreciate that. You would share view two proposed? Sir? So here in view two, you can see that-
Sorry, if, if you could, if you could stay behind the microphone, whenever you step away, FCTV completely loses.
Okay, understood. So here in view two, you can see that that new tower array, although it doesn't have guy wires, which I'm really not concerned about, the actual antenna array, that, that unit, the mass, it, so obviously height is really the, the primary question, which they appear to have answered. The mass alone being visible from our living space, our driveway, the roadway, everywhere, which currently is not visible from every unit in our place or every residential butter. That mass that's, that's represented there, I think if you put that in scale in the photos that I shared with the board and with Attorney Perry, would, would, you would, I think it would be a little bit of a, an eye-opener as what the real impact will be on, on our properties. So I don't know if I can, I don't have a color copy, I apologize. I won't do this right now. So to that point, I feel like, you know, a missing component here is a, an accurate and fair depiction of, of what this tower will look like, not just for us, but for the town. I mean, a lot of people are going up and using High Field Hall, the theater, Beebe Woods, et cetera. And it's a change, it's a significant change. And I understand they have the right, and I understand emissions are clearly regulated by the FCC. But anyway, so I digress. As part of the, the placement and mass and height of this, this antenna, they're proposing to move it slightly to the south on an area they deem suitable for this. As, as their landlord wrote in their letter, you know, this is a large property and they have a good footprint where the existing tower is. And we're simply asking at this point as well, them to look at another location, possibly further to the north, that would take it out of our direct sightline and soften this new height and mass of an array. That's number one. Number two is with regards to property values. You know, not having fair depictions, I think it makes it really hard for, for anyone to accurately comment on what, what the impact may or, or could be. And at this point, we'd also ask for an opportunity to review that appraisal and seek possibly an alternative, you know, an alternate rec, I'm sorry, opinion of, of value and what the potential of value could, value change could be. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not used to really public speaking like this, I apologize.
No worries.
Lastly, I do appreciate the applicant's effort to assist us with the repairs of the roadway. Again, it's not something that has been high on my personal priority list, it just came up with, with this process. So that being said, I would take any questions?
I think we do have a question for you, Bob?
Yes, I have a question. So, so in your, in your letter, you mentioned about property values and that's probably your main concern. But I didn't see anything that was submitted to support what current values are, what changes are, what you're comparing that with.
Right.
So what were you basing that on, just opinion? Or do you actually have anything that shows sales data, comparison data, town data?
That, that's a good point. So I don't think that, that really anyone, I mean, so I, I understand that there's been some data crunch. So the answer to your question is, I, I do not have data to support that. What I do have is, like a lot of people in this room, a lot of experience, 20, 20-plus years of experience in real estate, including being a licensed salesperson. I can tell you right now, to have this new structure right outside of our windows will impact values. There's no question in my mind, I, and I-
Yes, I guess this is what I'm asking, and I understand your statement.
Yeah.
But to make a statement that it will.
Yep.
That's a definite. You have to base it on something.
Understood.
Now, your complex up there, is that the only condominium complex in the, in that area?
Uh, yes, it is.
So, if I was looking at it from experience end, and I'm a licensed agent, I would look at it as the type of property first. Values in your area probably be based more on what type of property it is in the closest to town. I did, so you know, when they did the balloon test, I actually specifically went to your complex because I know that, that you had the most interest in, and you were worried about values.
I believe I saw you there, thank you.
And I did take pictures from the complex. I actually walked into the driveway and checked the complex. It seemed that for many of the use from there that you see the tower where it is now, most of it, you see more of it now because there's no leaves on the trees. In some angles, there's branches and things that come up. There's also going to be some kind of a growth height. So if you, let's say they could move it to the north. You've made a, you know, point saying that, well, this is what you're looking at from if you're going down Depot Ave, or this is what you're looking at from High Field Hall. How would a move to the north affect those locations?
I, I believe, so based on the fact that I, I, as for an example, from, from unit one at 45 High Field Drive, I currently cannot see the existing tower. The move, so, so it's not even a height issue. It's simply relocating it to the south places it in my clear view, based on the crane test. And, and as far as the other locations, it's the same with the High Field Hall, although I'm not here to speak on behalf of High Field Hall specifically, nor do I have any indication of whether there be a, a property value.
No, and just for the record, just because-
But, but yeah, so I, I think that something that's critical here is to, to get a secondary version of this that will truly show the board what this will look like in the neighborhood. This, I mean, this is, in trade, in trade language, sure, this is neighborhood, but these, these locations are not, are not the neighborhood. It's not the, the, the abutters' property. So I would argue that these don't fairly show how large, how intense this use will be on the adjacent properties. And I, I understand that I, I don't have values to, to, to back them up or sales.
I'm just asking because in these, in these applications dealing with towers and Federal Communications Commission, we are extremely limited on some of the things we can do.
Sure, sure.
And you can ask someone to look at a different location, but if they decide they don't want to look at a different location, I don't know how much of a purview we have to actually say, we've decided if you move it 10 feet or 20 feet to the left, that now that's going to be okay. And from what I'm seeing that was submitted to the file, and I understand your letter, I just have nothing in here concrete to back up what your assertions are. If I did, if you said that this is the value of our complex now and we know that before a tower was there, this is what it was going for, or after the tower, there's been some kind of sales data that shows that there's a drop and this is what the percentage dropped, then we can actually look at something for comparison. But without that, and the appraiser that submitted tonight, even though I haven't looked over the full report, I, I scanned it through, he's pretty much done comparisons in similar areas, similar towns. I mean, I wouldn't agree with the stuff that's outside of Massachusetts, but he's got enough stuff in here from Massachusetts to show that they haven't found in general a wide range of property loss.
I'm, I understand, I understand what you're saying, 100%. I would simply ask that we are, are able to, you know, generate a, a rendering or a likeness of what this will be like, because then I believe we could have an appraiser look at this for us and, and make a recommendation on, on what, if any, the, the impact would be on, on values and the overall curb appeal, presence, et cetera, of, of the, of our, our properties. We don't have that, and, you know, I, I did provide those photos, of course, last minute, but I, I don't think that, that this, these photo simulations fairly or adequately show what this will, what this will be like for the character of the neighborhood, the character of the town, or how it will impact our, our property values. I just don't. And I think that, you know, they're saying that they've got, you know, that these tenants have not designed their, their, their equipment yet, so that, to me, that says we have time to evaluate where there is, whether there would be a benefit by moving this to another location within this 18-plus acre parcel that would, that would eliminate the, the, the impact on us as abutters and also satisfy their need for their tenants.
And I guess just my last question is, so on the letter that you sent, you list yourself as a trustee, and it says at the bottom, on behalf of the abutters, as the Town House Condominium Trust. So do you have the power to represent the whole trust, or does it have to be a vote? Or do you have anything from any of the other unit owners that say that you're representing it for the whole trust?
I have one other trustee with me and one other neighbor, but yeah, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the High Field, High, High Field Townhouse Condominium Trust, sorry. High Field Hillside Townhouse Condominium Trust.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, any other follow-up questions from the board? Jerry?
Follow, uh-
Yes, sir.
I, it's difficult, you know, one person submits something, then the other person will say, I want to review it, and then the original person will want to put it. In my mind, I, I don't know why you didn't do your own, even it's rudimentary, I know, you know, analysis to, to support what you're saying.
Sure.
It's speculation, and to me, it would have been better if you came in with a rudimentary analysis. To answer, the answer to Bob's question was, did the condominium association officially vote you to represent them?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The two trustees here, and some, do they? So was there a vote by the condominium association to authorize you to speak on their behalf versus an individual?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I was, just wasn't following the, the nature of the question.
Okay, it gets, I'll take, the, the other thing is, do you have any view rights? Views, you put anything up anywhere and you're going to upset someone's views. Some people have view rights that they have easements. There's other things, view rights on public property and things like that. You say your view's going to be impacted, and I believe it's going to be, but do you have rights to the view?
I'm not claiming rights to the view, I'm just asking that the replacement tower doesn't negatively impact my views.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, fair enough. You also mentioned, I just want to just clarify one thing. I, I know that you have a lot of, a lot of these applicants versus abutters, and I am no way suggesting that, you know, I'm an attorney or that, you know, I have countless hours to sort of quantify all this. I would like to, like an opportunity to provide documentation to support my assertions that this will impact property values. And I, I think that part of that would be having photo, photo renderings created that which will, will depict what's going to be built.
And how long would it take you?
I think if we, if I can put together the photo simulations, I don't know, I don't need, I wouldn't need a lot of time.
A week, two weeks?
To do an analysis of value?
Do whatever you want to do to submit to us.
I think I'd like, I mean, I guess if, if I had 14 days, or two days.
Okay, just-
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm not looking, I'm not looking to protract this, I understand, I understand their rights. I'm just asking that, that all options here to make, make this, because this is going to be here for the next 40 years. And so it's, I feel like it just, I just like the opportunity to, to-
In all fairness, in all fairness to the applicant, sir, though, you had time to do it. And with Jerry's point.
Yep.
It's been that important, and, and please don't take this the wrong way.
No.
They've got all their information and time. They've got all their information and time.
Sure.
They've got, they've got an appraiser in here last minute.
Yep.
And I think it's a little unfair that we've requested all of this from them. And if it was that important, and I, and I trust that it is to you, you've had the same amount of time they have to rebut this. So it's, I mean, that's how I feel about it. But I mean, we're not in discussion mode.
No, no, but I think it's, it's a fair assertion, but also I'm not a company with legal counsel. I'm just a guy with a family.
Understand.
And this is the best we could do.
Appreciate it.
I have, yeah.
And thank you for your comments tonight. We do have to move it along to other public comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Anyone else have any other question, comment, or concern? Anyone else out there? Oh, sure.
My name is Patricia Peel. I live at 45 Highfield Drive, Unit 5. I am a homeowner. I am not a trustee on the Homeowner Association. And there are two items in our original letter that have not been addressed. And one is, the applicant has stated that the reason for applying for the tower is for the community, for the increased ability for emergency services and not dropped calls within the community. But there isn't any substantiation of that. And that is something we asked for from the original application. And the second item is the deed. The original deed of the property, the conservatory's property, is that it is to be used for educational and purposes and green space. And although they got the permitting for the original tower at the 160 feet, it's, it's, it's still not in compliance with the original use of the original deed. And this is the time to talk about that and to put that on the table and see whether or not the life of this tower has come to an end in that it be returned to the original purpose for educational use and green space. Now, there are also other towers out there that, that replicate green space. And I'm not sure that, why they're not being proposed if this is the original purpose of the deed for green space and education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question today.
Sorry, we have a couple of follow-up questions for you. Bob, go ahead.
So you don't, you don't represent the conservatory, though, right? I mean, you're mentioning the conservatory deed, so do you, we haven't received anything from the conservatory.
It was provided in our, with our original letter from the homeowners.
I guess what I'm saying is that the conservatory, if they have the deed, and they have a deed restriction, and if they have a deed restriction with the town, it would be up to the town, but the conservatory is the one that would have to bring up issues with their deed or the town.
They're the ones who lease the property.
But they're the owner of record. It would be like, it would be like you leasing your property to somebody, and then another owner somewhere else saying that, well, you're not controlling your property, right? Kind of representing you. So, again, if there were, I guess my biggest issue is if there were a lot of, the original Butters' list went out way back. I mean, we're talking September, October. Everyone has had, pretty much had time, if they were super concerned about some of these issues, that if they had enough weight that we could use. We don't have any background on any of this from the conservatory, the deed restrictions, the... So it's, we have nothing to base it on.
In the very first meeting, the deed was sent to everyone on the board, and I believe it was you who did state that you should all familiarize yourself with the deed before the next meeting.
And you should, but I guess what I'm saying is, nobody that's the owner or anyone related to the deed...
Is here?
Is contacted the board that there's issues with our deed.
But they wouldn't because they're financially benefiting from not...
But then it would be the town, or you'd have to, you would have a basis, I guess, against another property owner, but, you know, you know what I'm saying? I understand what your concern is, and I understand you're saying, you know, there's maybe green towers or something else different. And not to be blunt, I mean, I understand what Butters' issues are. I've had issues myself with projects that went against me, but the developers actually don't have to go with a different design green tower, or they have to comply with what the regulations are. They have to comply with what the FCC regulations are. So I understand your concerns. I just, I don't see we can base it on...
So deed restrictions, what are deed restrictions for, then?
It's not a zoning purview, ma'am.
It's not a zoning...
I understand your concern, that's a private, that's a private servitude that has to be enforced in Land Court or Superior Court. It has nothing to do with the zoning board now.
I see. Thank you.
Got a follow-up question?
Go ahead, Jerry.
Oh, I'm sorry, would you finish, Bob?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
You said green towers. I've seen some green towers. In my opinion, they're pretty ugly.
Are they?
Well, they were a few years back out around Fort Devens. They look like, in my opinion, a stick coming up and no leaves coming off a branch. Do you have any other examples of green towers?
I believe we're talking about the same green towers, and I believe...
The one I'm talking is just outside of Devens. Maybe the applicant can talk about green towers later.
Yes, and, but perhaps they're creating a better one now by the time that they get to that point.
Thank you.
Thank you, good comments, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment? Anyone else out there? It's a full room, so I'm just making sure I'm getting everyone. All right, seeing none. Back to the board.
Thank you, wanted to talk. Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see him.
So first, just to be clear, this tower has been there for an awfully long time. So my guess is that the tower was there before the condominiums were. So the idea that, you know, we're doing something that is out of the ordinary. The tower's been there for a long time. The conservatory, if you recall, actually sent a letter of support. I agree, it's, I think a deed restriction's a legal issue, but you mentioned the conservancy hadn't sent anything in, but they actually are, are landlord and sent in a letter of support. And there is a financial component that they derive revenue from of the tower. Let me also note, you know, these antennas that we're talking about, this existing tower, the antennas could be moved up to the top. So, you know, we're looking to do the tower, and the carriers are going to go up at the top. But, you know, a tower, that's what they're built for. So even the guide tower, if it was strong enough, or if we could modify it or reconstruct it in its place, the antennas would all be up at the top. So I think it's a little disingenuous to say, well, that's going to make a big change. The big change we're making is 10 feet. The antennas, the tower is designed for antennas. So I just want to be sure that we're comparing apples to apples. They will see a bulkier top of the tower, but we could do the same thing to the guide tower if it was structurally enhanced or if we added guide wires, which nobody wants to do. They're antiquated, and they don't work for all the loading that's required to put up, which, which is required by the carriers to put up on the, on the towers. With respect to the location, as I said, we're in a very tricky spot with the Cape Cod Commission. Cape Cod Commission says this is not a development of regional impact if you only extend the tower 20 feet from its original. If it's extended by 10 feet, we have 10 foot more. If we move the tower to a lower elevation, we're Cape Cod Commission. Now, that's contrary to the whole concept of, you can extend it by 20 feet, let's move it to a lower place so that we don't comply with the purpose and intent. With respect to green towers, it's eye of the beholder. The only decent ones I've seen are up in New Hampshire, where they're trying to cover highways, and the background is all mountains. And we put up these, you know, we call them monopines, where it's a monopole with antennas, and you can see everything, but we put these green branches. So if it's off in the distance, and, you know, it's on a hillside, then it sort of blends in, but there aren't a lot of 180-foot pine trees. So from a distance, this will stick out. If you were to go with, I think what she's referring to is a green. The other thing that was raised was comments about our photo sims. I want to have Scott Adams from AEG come up just quickly, because we don't monkey around with the photo sims. We know they're going to be scrutinized. The photos you received are clearly zoomed in. We get that. I mean, if I were in my backyard, I would zoom in with a camera. But we do these professionally, so I want to have Scott just explain to the board how the photographs are taken, at what levels, and that they are more comparative to the view, what a human eye is going to see with the landscape in total. He'll be very brief, but Scott Adams.
Hello, again, just for the record, Scott Adams with Advanced Engineering Group. I'm a principal. We do these all the time, literally thousands of them, over the course of 20 years, all throughout New England, from, you know, Cape, from New York all the way to Nova Scotia, basically. We do these type of facilities everywhere. We present regularly to boards such as this. They get reviewed in a lot of instances as well. But over time, it's been proven via different analysis and report that the closest comparison between the naked eye and photo simulations is 35 millimeter focal width, basically. So that's what we strive to do our photos with. We may take zoomed-in photos for the sake of being able to draw things efficiently, but we make sure that the reports that we provide to boards is using 35 millimeters. And a lot of times, we get photos that are submitted from a Butters or from someone else, and when we look at them, we can clearly see that they're zoomed in. In some of these, one of these, one of the samples that was submitted to us was from someone's bedroom window, which, you know, we're not going on private property. We have no rights to go on private property. So we're looking at this as a public at large. How's it going to, to try to give a true indication to the board of what the tower's going to look like? We try to go in a full circle around to get a variety of locations for the boards. You can get a true kind of impact overall for the area. We kind of go around the block, so to speak. And if there's specific locations that the board asked for, we try to incorporate those. In this instance, there's a huge distance to the rear, so obviously that was kind of fruitless. So we kind of focused our energy on a nice semicircle around this proposed location. So I guess that would be my, my caveat, is, you know, every photo isn't equal, so to speak. You need to make sure that it's done professionally, using professional equipment. Our towers, as when we designed them, they're actually drawn in three dimensions. We're using the height of relative objects, the crane, in this case, or the width of the balloon, because we know the diameter. When we do it, we're recording not only temperatures, the daytime the photos are taken, visibility. We're also recording the diameter of whatever we're using in the photos to make sure that everything is to scale relatively. We can't do that when we, when we receive photos that we don't know how they were taken. We don't know what focal length, what zoom they were, they were taken from, and that, that location is critical in order to get a real reasonable representation of what the site's going to look like. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
All right, any questions from the board?
No.
Seeing any?
No. Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate the attention. I would just suggest to, a reminder that we are extending an existing tower by 10 feet, the Condominium Association, which is generating the vast majority of the opposition. It was located some 400 feet away. If you look at the photographs, even that were submitted, you kind of got to look through the trees. I know that a big yellow crane sticking up is pretty easy to pick out, but relatively speaking, I'd rely on all the information we've provided. We'd be happy to answer any questions. We respectfully request that the board approve our application. Thank you.
Any follow-up questions from the board? All right, not seeing any?
Do we want to have some discussion before we close the hearing, or?
Typically, we close the hearing and then discuss. Well, let me ask the board this, have, do we have everything we need in order to close the hearing and possibly make a decision today? Just I'll throw that out there before we actually close the hearing.
So I would say yes.
I think I would say yes, I think. Extending it, they had an opportunity to submit additional information, but I wanted to see how the other members felt about getting more information.
I think based upon everything that we have, I think we have everything we need in order to close.
Make a motion to close it.
Second.
All right, motion to close the hearing made by Jerry and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
So, so then I would...
For discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I'll, I'll suppose, closing it as a question if you, if you do want to have board discussion.
Okay, I thought, I don't care if you want to reopen it. Do we close it or not?
No, no, we close the hearing. I'm asking if the board wants to entertain discussion prior to making a vote.
If you want briefly, so I just, I think the applicant has made their case for the replacement tower. The board does have to work within guidelines of the FCC. I know there are questions about emissions. Those are regulated by the FCC. I do agree that on a conditional permit, that any time there's a provider adding to the tower, they should submit to the town what their current output is, and that should also be submitted to the board, just so the town has a sense of what the current emissions are. The, as far as the Cape Cod Commission, the Cape Cod Commission does not consider this regional impact unless it does go over that 20 feet. So they're within the 20 feet. So we can't do a referral to Cape Cod Commission. It fits within their guidelines that they've previously done. We have enough testimony that says, even though we know they can go up to 100%, that in the applicant's counsel experience, that he hasn't really seen them go over 50%. It won't limit them, but we can list it in. But rather than me making a motion to approve with conditions, I would feel more comfortable to make a motion to draft an approval, have the administrative draft an approval, because I think there's a lot of issues that we have to get in here as far as emissions and FCC and signage. And at that point, we could review the draft at a following hearing, at a date to be determined.
And we did receive some information on both sides late.
Yeah, we got information on both sides. I just want to make sure that, that as an approval, that we don't miss anything upfront, because a lot of this is technical. We can take some from the original permit. So I don't know if there's further discussion, but if there isn't further discussion, then I'd make a motion.
I think it's a good idea.
I'd suggest that the chair inform the public and the Butters that the hearing is closed, so we're not accepting any more, any more information other than what we have.
No, sure, no, just...
Just to get that on the record.
Sure, just to reiterate, the hearing is closed. No more testimony may be, may be taken at this point. Bob's point, I think it brings up a good idea about directing, or in the draft, a positive decision for our review at a future hearing. And to Bob's comments, I would just add that although the ZBA does have special permit granting authority, what we can actually, you know, condition this project, we are heavily regulated by both the FCC and the Federal Telecom Act. So those are my comments.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so then that being said, then I would make a motion to...
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Sure.
If we could ask the presenting attorney. I think last time we did a cell tower replacement, we offered 60 days following the completion of the tower to remove the old tower. So, you know, where we're going to put that in the decision, do you want to just inquire if that amount of time is sufficient?
Sure.
Make a motion reopen for, is that test?
Sure. All right, so the motion was made by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are reopening the hearing just to that limited question.
Yeah, so there's, as long as we have a reasonable time, the driver is really not the tower, the driver's the carriers. So, once the carriers move over and are operating, 60 days is a no-brainer to remove the tower. So we've just got to get them over to the new tower, and then we, they can cease operations at the old tower and it be removed. So we could trigger it off of the, you know, carriers ceasing operations of the tower at the existing tower. 60 days from there, we'll remove it. It's not really a best way otherwise to do that.
Wouldn't that be conditioned, Norrie, like that?
Yeah, I would think so. I guess the only question would be, you know, what kind of timeline do the carriers need to do that move?
Right, so once the tower gets built, they could probably, you know, begin moving, and at least the first one should be able to get over in 30 days, but they will be staggered.
Okay, so 60 days from relocation, then?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think the best way for both of us, whether it's 60 days from operation on the new tower, the other one has to come down.
Is it the transfer of the last carrier? I mean...
It is, because if, they can't go dark, so they're going to continue to operate, so...
So how, you mean is it four carriers? So, you mean is it four carriers? Are you going to get more carriers?
Well, yeah, the new ones won't count. This is only for the existing, that's why I think we should trigger it to the existing, because...
Okay, that's clarification.
Because Dish has talked about coming on board, they're the new carrier in the market. They shouldn't, they wouldn't have a play in this, as far as the removal, because they're not on it. So for the existing carriers operating 60 days after they cease operations on the existing tower, we can take it down.
Okay, thank you.
The motion is closed?
All right, motion to close the hearing made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, hearing is closed. Once again, no more testimony may be taken.
Again, I'd make a motion to direct the administrator to draft an approval with conditions with this application. I mean, we can go through some of the... We might as well do some of the findings. The tower is doing an upgrade to allow wireless service. It's to increase the, increase the efficiency and quality of service in the area, which would include emergency services.
Increase in height.
Yeah, which is a public good. The height is only increasing 10 feet.
The testimony was found as problematic to move the tower because of the 20-foot restriction on it, and the topography of the property makes it problematic.
Yeah, with Cape Cod Commission, it would trigger a review. Would have find that the applicant has agreed, will agree to a condition to remediate repairs on damages done by a previous contractor. They were described at the hearing, including Highfield Drive, trenching, et cetera. And then when we do those conditions, we can make those conditions to be acceptable to the town engineering standards, or we can have them do the sign-off.
Is that a public road? Because I think town engineering...
So even if it's not a public road, we could still have them go to town engineering standards?
If he'll review it.
Yeah, I guess what I would recommend too, though, is that that also be attached to the completion of the tower.
Of the tower, yeah. We'd add that in as the condition with completion.
For the amount of time that they're doing the work, it doesn't make sense to repair until after.
Would be appropriate to mention Mr. Potamus's language about boring under the road in the future. We did...
You know, I don't think you can...
I don't think you can limit it to that, that's the problem.
...how they do installations.
All right. You can put in the findings that they did check the exposure limits on the current tower. Put in a finding that they submitted the height certification from AEG Advanced Engineering that actually went over all the previous reports on the property, so there were multiple cases where the 170-foot height of the current tower was depicted.
Property value estimation, too.
Yep, that they submitted a full property value appraisal report documenting no extreme change in sales values due to the tower. I also put in there that they did submit, in the appraisal, they submitted all over New England, but they did submit multiple properties specifically to Massachusetts.
Letters of support and opposition?
Yeah, those will all be listed in the...
Yeah, should we summarize? I mean, the neighbors did make a presentation, so in the...
Well, you could put a finding that the neighbors' main concerns were property values concerns, and you could put that there was a, there was testimony regarding another property on a possible deed, issues which would be a private matter.
And it should be in there that the presentation was made by unauthorized member of that association as well.
Yeah, the testimony was that the letter received from Miles Ostroff as a trustee of the Highfield Association was that they did vote him to give the, vote him to represent them at this hearing.
Finding we have no authority over the deed restrictions unless...
Just, we'll just put it, that would be a private matter.
Yeah, however you want to word it. I think we have a public easement.
The new, the current tower would have to remain in place until the new tower is constructed and the utility carriers have transferred over to the new tower. Again, this is going to be replacement of a lattice tower versus the guy tower that's there now. Tower shall comply with federal law, and you could actually add in the radio frequency limits. Compliant communication signage would have to appear. Tower was remaining unlit. There was no issues with FAA. Complies with most of, complies with 240-216. You know, when we do conditions, we'll do per plans, we'll add the condition about the tower can remain until the current provider is transferred to the new tower.
Has built certification for the height?
Yeah, and I would put in there that no new provider be added to the new tower and to the old providers are transferred over.
And the status call working hours and all of that when you get to that point. Bob, I think we're going to be deep in this right now.
Yeah.
Reed?
No.
We could always comment too, if we, we can adjust the backside of that.
And just put the finding in about the Osprey thing, that they know that they regulate them and the nest could only be removed at, they're regulated by that for when that could be removed.
All right, so Bob had made the motion to direct Noreen to draft a positive motion.
With conditions.
With conditions, be reviewed at a future...
Do we know what our next, when you're doing this, what the next day would be?
Our next meeting is February 24.
Then why don't we, why don't we put it at February 24th meeting? Yeah, we'll just, we might as well get over it. So we'll review it at the February 24th meeting. For an anticipated vote.
All right, so those motion made by Bob. Is there a second?
And just for the public, if you want to announce that this is just, when we review it, it'd be a discussion for the board, no public input.
Yeah, the meeting's closed, so we can't accept anything else.
Sorry, Scott, you're not a voting member on this, but I'll take a second from someone else.
Second.
All right, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, this is a continuance. Some people filter out.
Chairman, do you want to consider taking one out of order?
Well, we're going to have a, the next one's a continuance request, so...
Yeah. All right, so up next, we have hearing number 112-21, Hall Lynch, 8 Cotuit Road, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove the existing garage and construct an addition with an attached garage exceeding 20% lock coverage by structures.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have a request from applicant's attorney, Laura Monahan, asking for a continuance. They're still in front of Conservation Commission. So the letter is to request a continuance of the above referenced application from February 10th to February 24th. Project is before the Conservation Commission and will require additional time to complete the Conservation Commission review and potential plan changes. So they'd appreciate if the board would continue the hearing to February 24th. So motion to, I'm not going to open, so motion to continue to February 24th.
Second, Mr. Julius Martin.
All right, so motion to continue this hearing to February 24th, made by Bob, second by Scott, and noting for the record that we did not open the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, up next, we have application 113-21, Miranda, 105 Redlands Road in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit slash variance to allow a home occupation for indoor swimming lessons slash aqua classes.
So application number 113-21, Sandra Miranda, 105 Redlands Road, East Falmouth, Mass., is applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit slash variance pursuant to sections 240-162 and 240-203 of the Code of Falmouth to allow a home occupation for indoor swimming lessons slash aqua classes on subject property known as 105 Redlands Road, East Falmouth, Mass. for referrals. From the Health Department, the pool will require an annual permit to operate a public, semi-public pool per 105 CMR 435, since the applicant wants to use it as such. Health has been to the pool and has been working with the applicant to determine what is required of the existing pool to meet this CMR. Health will only be able to permit this pool once all of the regulations contained in the CMR are met. From Engineering. The application was reviewed for impact to public rights of way and public utilities. Redlands Road and Courier Road are public rights of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the rights of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Two, there appears to be some issues with the existing access to the site. There's two photos shown. It says these appear to be two unpermitted driveways off of Courier Road. The photos are from January 10th, 2022. These two driveways did not exist in 2011. The date of these Google Street Views, and no permit was found in our records for construction of these driveways or clearing within the public right of way. There are three driveways for this lot. Only two driveways per lot are allowed in Falmouth. The southern driveway is closer than the minimum five-foot setback from a budding property line. Neither driveway on Courier Road has the required apron. It isn't clear in the plan, but it appears based on a site visit and notes on the plan that clients would access the parcel from Courier Road via the northern unpermitted driveway. We defer to the zoning board of appeals if these issues should be cleared up prior to any approval. The Engineering Division can accept the driveway permit after the fact if the driveway is brought up to standards. We would also need information about rights to access across no access line, which is shown on land court plan 16583, sheet two. And there's a copy from that plan, which is sheet two of eight, that shows the no access line. Three, plans do not show an existing driveway on the north side of the property, and the existing driveway on the south side of the property extends over the abutting parcel to the south. Note that both existing driveways run through a no access easement that is shown on the land court plan 16583. The plans show a fence located within the public right of way of Courier Road. Fences in the public right of way typically require a license from the select board. Is there a license for this fence? Five, the site plans do not appear to match the facility sketch. The site plans show an exterior pool deck and pavers. The sketch shows an enclosed pool house. There are handwritten notes on the site plan which don't match the sketch plan, so it isn't clear what represents the existing conditions. Six, depending on access from Courier Road, additional address posting may be suggested for emergency response vehicles such as Falmouth Fire Rescue, along with their review. Seven, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. And eight, the project must not direct any stormwater right off the public property of Butters or public rights of way. From Concom, the project does appear outside of Concom jurisdiction. Fire department has no issues with project is drawn. Water department has no comment. Planning has no comment. There are multiple letters related to the project, so I'll go through those. Dated January 7, 2022, to the Falmouth zoning board of appeals, oh, I'm sorry, dated February 5th, received on the, missed on the date. I am opposed to any special variances for commercial uses being granted in the Asshumat Valley neighborhood, and that's signed by Tony Merlino at 8 Redlands Road. This is from a John Bowers at 156 Club Valley Drive, dated February 7th, regarding Miranda's ZBA hearing, 105 Redlands. I would like to add my name to those of several of my neighbors in requesting you oppose this request for a variance or waiver of the zoning regulations of the town. The use of a significant portion of this home for commercial use may invite other such activities in our small lock community. Variances are typically granted only for extraordinary circumstances of hardship, and this request does not seem to meet the threshold. Dated February 4th, from Marcy in Ron Clattenburg at 135 Regis Road. We live in the Asshumat Valley Property Owners Association, AVPOI, a quiet residential neighborhood bounded by Route 151, Sandwich Road and Courier Road. The main roads within this development are Fordham, Club Valley, Redlands and Regis. In 2021, the Mirandas installed an indoor swimming pool at 105 Redlands. We were surprised to read, we were surprised and disturbed to read a recent January Enterprise article regarding the installation, and the permits had been issued for personal use only. After completion of the pool, we noticed cars were parked in the northernmost new driveway closest to Sandwich Road, and also on the side of Courier Road. We assumed they were having a party. Cars began appearing regularly on Tuesdays and Thursdays throughout the day. There was a regular turnover of vehicles throughout the day. To accommodate the parking, the northernmost new driveway has been enlarged. The latest work was done in November of 2021, making it a parking lot with room for at least nine cars. The house fronts on Redlands Road and the original driveway entrances from Redlands. The rear of the dwelling is on Courier directly across from Asshumat Pond. As a point of interest, another resident of Asshumat Valley living on Redlands Road had hoped to have access to the back of his property from Courier Road. He was told that the town would not allow any new access driveways into association properties that abutted Courier Road. It is an egregious violation to have the Mirandas build their pool without obtaining proper permitting to run a commercial operation within a residential neighborhood. It is also egregious that they installed two illegal driveways fronting on Courier Road, one of which was enlarged twice to accommodate more cars without any permitting. We ask that you deny their application. It will set a dangerous precedent to others to just build and retroactively deal with zoning issues. Please remember, this area is zoned residential and agricultural. Commercial businesses with clients in parking lots are unacceptable. Recently, Falmouth instituted new requirements and restrictions regarding public pools. We question whether or not the Health Department has been made aware of this situation, has been testing the water quality of the public pool. Lastly, we question if there are restroom facilities available for clients, and is the septic system large enough to handle the increased waste properly? The pool is directly across the road from Asshumat Pond. Thank you for your consideration. This is from Lois Corbett, 227 Club Valley Road, dated February 5th. I'm ready to ask the zoning board deny the Miranda building variances. I've been living in Asshumat Valley since 2003 and feel this area is a residential neighborhood and not a place for businesses that would overbuild on their property or create more traffic along Courier Road or Redlands. The business will impact our neighborhood and be a danger to the community. The intersection of Courier and Sandwich Roads has poor street lighting and sightline for cars now, and this business will add to safety concerns. I'm also very concerned about pollution that would come from cars in parking lot across the street from Asshumat Pond. I hope the zoning board will not approve the variance or special exception in our neighborhood. This one's dated February 2nd, from Linda Bowers, 156 Club Valley Drive. I'm opposed to the special variances for commercial uses for home businesses being granted in the Asshumat Valley neighborhood, because approval of such variances may lead to unintended consequences within our quiet, modest residential area. Our streets are narrow, have no sidewalks, and have many people who walk for exercise and nature enjoyment. The roads being used by both people and existing residential cars cannot accommodate extra traffic. Homes are purchased with no expectation that there will be commercial activities nearby. Providing certainties and land use expectations is, after all, one of the purposes of zoning. Granting variances will subvert these expectations. Chapter 24162 of the town bylaws applies. Here's the traffic citation regarding home businesses, but there are other citations relevant also. No traffic shall be generated by such home occupation in greater volume than would normally be expected in that residential neighborhood, no which jeopardizes the traffic safety of that neighborhood. This use may increase parking by no more than two additional vehicles at any time, and any need for parking generated by the conduct of such a home occupation shall be met off the street and other than in a required front yard or within five feet of any side or rear property line. I write to bring attention to the at least three home businesses in Asshumat Valley. The ones that I highlight are the ones that generate traffic in or otherwise distract from the neighborhood. There are other home businesses, like contractors of the neighborhood, that do not generate traffic nor store equipment in a way that devalues surrounding properties. I don't have a complaint about those and support the zoning regulations that govern these types of businesses. The unpermitted commercial activities that I bring to your attention are the Miranda's indoor pool at 105... one oh five Redlands Road and also fronting on Courier Road, the aerial yoga at the intersection of Austin Stokes and Fordham, which is ninety-five Club Valley Drive, and the mini-house trailer located in the driveway of two twenty-two Club Valley Drive. Please do not grant the Miranda's request for a variance. This variance into a special exception will create a parking lot for commercial use and encourage concentrations of cars within our neighborhood. An error may have been made in building the indoor pool with the expectation that it could be used for other than personal lessons and exercise. The building and zoning officials should not have approved the building application if it was made known that the pool would be used for commercial purposes. Exceptions because it is already built should not be considered nor allowed. Town staff raised issues in their reviews such as more lot coverage than allowed, lots of parking issues, stormwater runoff from the so-called parking lot in Asshument Pond, oh, into Asshument Pond, lack of pool permit, too close to neighbors, site plan and facility plans don't match, and access issues. Will there be advertising signs? Will there be employees? I can imagine there will be. Again, I ask that the variance be denied. The aerial yoga should not be allowed either for many of the same zoning and traffic concerns and questions about the legality of the mini-house office trailer have been raised with zoning officer and yet has been placed, and yet it has been in place for close to a year. It is in the front yard and clearly visible by neighbors and from the street rather than being located in the rear of the building. Its appearance distracts from the neighbors' well-kept homes. While auxiliary buildings are allowed, they are probably not allowed in the front yard. It feels like there is a creeping commercialization within the neighborhood. I ask that you keep that in mind as you make your decision. I don't want to regret your setting a precedent by allowing this one. February first, from a John and Sue Moriarty. As thirty-year-plus residents of Courier Road, we have some questions about the property at one oh five Redlands where they want to have a public pool. First, we don't have a problem with the Miranda's having a pool on their property and using it for business even. We do have a problem with the patrons at their pool entering and exiting onto Courier Road and parking along Courier Road. We always understood that there cannot be curb cuts in Courier Road from Asshument Valley. We were under the understanding it was right in the Asshument Valley bylaws, no curb cuts onto Courier Road. When they bought their property, there was a berm along the road there, and there was no access to Courier Road. They have cut two drives and now parking lot on Courier Road. Mrs. Miranda states her neighbors haven't complained about her pool. We say because she's been conducting pool business from Courier, not Redlands, where she shares with neighbors. They were advertising the pool on the Thumbtastic Spa website at five eighty-eight Courier Road. There were no house numbers on the side of Courier Road. The only solution we see to this problem is the access to Courier be blocked completely and be left that way. We also have an issue with their trash. They leave it on Courier Road seven days a week. It should be on Redlands, not Courier, and should be brought in from the curb after emptied. All week long, the trash is blowing down Courier Road. Sometimes the cans are blowing around. We're thinking with more people coming and going to the pool, there'll be more trash that will end up blowing down Courier Road. Again, John and Sue Moriarty. From February fifth, from a Joan and Robert Bates, twenty-nine Redlands Road. It has come to my attention that a neighbor, Sandra Miranda, has applied for zoning variance to open a commercial business down the street from us on Redlands Road at number one oh five. We were surprised by this as our neighbors, as our neighborhood is obviously a residential neighborhood. We have approximately two hundred and ten members of our neighborhood association, Asshument Valley Property Owners, Inc. The neighborhood abuts the Paul Harney Golf Course in Asshument Pond, both assets for us. Our lots are typically one-third to half an acre. We have worked to earn the town's acceptance of Redlands and other roads in our community in the fairly recent past. Our neighborhood works actively to assist the town with monitoring the health of Asshument Pond, on which we have a modest community private beach. We also seek to keep our area free of trash by conducting cleanups, and we hire local young people to mow common areas, clear leaves and debris. We are proud of the upkeep of our neighborhood through the neighborhood association, which has a board that meets monthly. We collect a modest hundred dollars per year to assist with various activities, beach maintenance, entry sign, common area maintenance, pond testing, especially during the recent outbreaks of the dangerous algae blooms. We also have a festival. Our neighborhood is active with walkers, joggers, people walking their dogs, children and teens playing ball and basketball on the roads. I detail this because I believe it will help you understand that we are a residential neighborhood where commercial enterprises are not advised could likely result in dangerous conditions. More specifically, the concern I have for the proposed commercial use is that it is proposed at a dangerous turn in the road. Redlands turns and is especially narrow at this point. Further, young children live in the immediate area and often play in the vicinity, riding their bikes and chasing dogs. We need to be vigilant driving along that road. We who are accustomed to it and are aware of the danger, people coming in to use the commercial property will not be aware of this danger, and terrible tragedies could likely occur. Further, additional parking and possible overflow parking will constitute a danger. Equally of concern to me is the implication that commercial uses of our residential area are acceptable and may start a trend that would be harmful to the Asshument Valley's peaceful residential life. And finally, as a Realtor in Falmouth in the Upper Cape, I also advise that this change will negatively imply property values. We ask you decline, decline to approve the requested new and commercial use of the property at one oh five Redlands Road. This is dated February tenth, from Jan R. Dees, President and C E O of American Vascular Associates in Palm Harbor, Florida. I am a supporter of the Thumbtastic, of the Thumbtastic Pool and Sandy Miranda, the owner. I took her class last season. I am a seasonal resident. And it was, it was therapeutic and beneficial for myself, and many ladies and I have found Sandy to be responsible and a great instructor. It aids many with a safe and comfortable environment for water exercise and aerobics. There is such a need in Falmouth, and the resources are nonexistent. Sandy complied with every requirement and went out of her way to have a safe and clean environment. She kept the pool pristine, and the common areas were continually upgraded. I support the Thumbtastic Pool in Falmouth at the current location. I had no issues with access or parking. Please, please feel free to contact me. Again, Jan Dees. It does not list if she's a resident of the area, just that she's a seasonal resident. Then, from Andrew Mediris, Mediris Design. My name is Andrew Mediris. I am a resident of Falmouth. I manage one of our local restaurants in the summertime and perform carpentry in the winter. I have performed work upon the indoor pool building at one oh five Redlands Road in East Falmouth. We have increased the accessibility to an A D A standard with the addition of a wheelchair-accessible self-closing door as well as a key fob member access. In my experience with Sandy Miranda as a client of hers and now a client of mine, the owner and operator of the pool and the Thumbtastic Spa has shown great reference and concern for the health and well-being of our community. The addition of this commercial use pool to our area would be great. Through my thirty-five years living and growing up in Falmouth, the options of places to swim throughout the years for mental and physical well-being have been few and far between. Many of the options we've had over the years have been poorly operated and not held to a proper standard of cleanliness. This local small business would allow the opportunity to grow, spread positivity and focus on the well-being that I have experienced in my time around it. Again, as a resident, it doesn't give a property address. This is from Nancy Groden at forty-two Elizabeth Jean Drive in East Falmouth. I am writing this in support of Sandy Miranda's pool at our home and ask that the zoning board of appeals reopen this pool to the community. It was very disappointing when the Atria closed their pool due to the pandemic. Their friendships that developed and the need for exercise were badly missed. Imagine the excitement when we heard about Sandy's pool and then the disappointment when it closed. Our community needs this. Again, Elizabeth Jean Drive, that's in Davisville. This one is from February tenth, from Susan E. Augusta, five twenty-two Old Meeting House Road, East Falmouth. I write in support of the application of Sandy Miranda. Ms. Miranda has created a program of water therapy long needed in Falmouth. Her facility is first-class, and she has worked hard to implement all necessary safety protocols. As one who has participated in her sessions, there has never been more than five people participating. While I understand the issue of permitting needs to be addressed, I hope the Board of Appeals gives the opportunity to rectify the situation. Her facility is as good as any commercial facility in Falmouth and certainly exceeds some of them. February tenth, from a Rose Torrielli, at one ten Dillingham Avenue, Unit one oh five. Dear zoning board, I am writing in support of the above special permit variance to allow a home occupation and indoor swimming lessons aqua classes. This is a much-needed service in the town of Falmouth. Ms. Miranda's club and classes are designed to help improve the health and fitness of every age group. As a senior citizen of Falmouth, the specifically designed pool at the facility makes it easy for me to participate in such activities. I also understand that Ms. Miranda will be using the facility for swim lessons for children. Given the proximity to such water in Falmouth, this is also a vital service. This in-home business is vital to our community. I understand that the owner did not have a good counsel prior to building the facility, but I know she has made good faith efforts to meet the requirements. As a limited-in-home business, I believe this should be eligible for a special permit. Dated February tenth, from Dom Lindbaugh. No address. My name is Dominique. My family and I are close friends of Sandra Miranda. I'm writing this letter in hopes to have an impact on the decision made today about opening the pool. Sandy has been running a successful business that has brought nothing but love and light to the community. She is the type of person who always looks to help the community, friends, family, and even strangers in any way she can. She makes a positive impact, and anyone who crosses her path is somewhat of a walking angel and healer on this earth. She's brought so many smiles to the community with countless activities such as yoga inside and on the beach, paddle boarding, massage therapy, cardio drum, you name it. She is always looking for a new way to get people up and active and enjoying their life with great energy. Sandy is one of the most hard-working and determined individuals. Every time she's been turned down, every time she has been turned down for pool services, she has successfully been dedicated to fixing and tweaking whatever she needs to be done to get it on track. She's in, she is by no means a quitter and is passionate about her missions. I do believe that with accepting this, it can only benefit the community in a positive way. She's an exceptional example of perseverance, and I believe this is an obstacle that she will overcome with greater benefit of the community in mind. She most definitely is a woman of her word and makes it, and makes her deeply happy to be able to help people. This pool is a prime example of many ways she can help others with fun exercise and water therapy. With opening the pool, it can help with swimming classes for the kids and anyone who would like to join, aqua workout classes, aqua zumba classes, et cetera. She is more than qualified to help others in the community become healthier and happier through the use of the pool. Please consider all the goods this pool can bring. Please consider the fact that it is in the hands of a wonderful, genuine, and selfless mentor and teacher willing to put the work in to help anyone who will be involved in the classes. The pool will open up in any way possible. Also, please keep in mind all of the good she has already brought to the community and allow it to reflect the potential this new opening will have. Thank you for your reading, and I hope you will consider this letter while making a determination. Again, that's a Dominique Lindbaugh. We just don't have an address. This is from a Candace M. Brighter. Again, no address. To whom it may concern, I'm writing this today on behalf of Sandy Miranda. I am a Falmouth resident and have been for many years. I met Sandy Miranda two days after my mom passed in September of twenty twenty-one. I signed up for the adult water class, hoping it could take my mind off my devastation of losing my mom. I suffer from a back disability, anxiety and P T S D. I was trying to find somewhere to go to get peace from my mind, pool and mind-body and mental health. Sandy's classes were nothing but amazing. For just that hour, I was able to forget my worries and enjoy the pool while enjoying exercising. That with back issues isn't very easy to accomplish. Sandy's classes are essentially my mental health. She is trying to create a safe and inviting environment for our community. The pool will do more good for our community than harm. I hope you will consider her request to have the pool open to those of us who desperately need a place that will bring us comfort. From December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, this is from Mary Ann Matthews, Director of Partnership for Independence out of Centerville. To whom it may concern, our organization supports adults with disabilities through community living services and social recreational programming on Cape Cod. We were fortunate to learn of Thumbtastic of Cape Cod this past year and have worked with Sandy Miranda for seven months to coordinate physical activities that are very beneficial to our members. Sandy's training and skills have been extremely well-received by our members who look forward to her classes in pool-based water programs. This letter serves as a strong recommendation for Sandy's work with persons with disabilities. Please contact me with any questions or information to help ensure Thumbtastic services can continue to our members. This is dated February ninth, from a Kindra Munz, I think it's Munz, from Venice, Florida. This is in support of Thumbtastic at one oh five Redlands Road, East Falmouth. Oh, I'm a snowbird who lives at my home at one oh one Redlands Road from May to October. My neighbor Sandy Miranda is very hardworking, so I was impressed that she expanded her Thumbtastic Wellness Center at her home in East Falmouth. That makes sense for all those whom this location is most convenient. It is creative solution for a much-needed service for the community. I have no problem with Thumbtastic being next door and hope Sandy's small business can continue and succeed. Thank you for your consideration. February ninth, from Lindsay DeMares. I'm writing on behalf of my neighbor Sandy Miranda. I live at twelve Redlands Road, and I know Sandy, her story, and what she's trying to create for the community. My family and I have no issues with her and the business she is trying to create. We have two teenage sons that play basketball out front in the street. I don't feel that any extra traffic headed to Sandy's will impact or harm our boys in any way. I know there are other neighbors that conduct businesses out of their homes in the neighborhood. Why should it be any different for Sandy? Her classes are in the morning during the day when kids are in school. I hope the board will consider her request at tomorrow night's hearing. This is from November fifteenth, from Susan Lumping and Christopher Lumping, fifty-two Criker Drive in North Falmouth, Mass. This letter is in support of Thumbtastic Pool on Courier Road. We are Falmouth residents who are unable to register our six-year-old son for swim lessons at his first grade level until he started lessons at Thumbtastic Pool this fall. We had registered our son at the Camp Linden location for the Y M C A camp this summer mainly because it was advertised for swim lessons each day. It turned out that the camp was not able to hire staff to give lessons, and none were given. We then tried to register him for swim lessons at the Y M C A in West Barnstable. Due to staffing shortages, the only classes that they offered for our son's level were given at times that were not possible for us to attend due to school's operating times and the distance to West Barnstable. We also looked into aquasafe lessons at the Sandwich High School. We were unable to register for those due to small class sizes because of COVID and the fact that registration preference was given to existing swimmers in the program. We then put him on the waitlist for Cape Cod Swim Club in August, and are still waiting for a spot to open up. Given the difficulty we had in registering our six-year-old for swim lessons, it would be very valuable for Thumbtastic Pool to be available in Falmouth for the youth to have access to group swim lessons, especially since they are surrounded by water on Cape Cod. From November sixteenth, my name is Tammy Langlais Boyle. I'm a resident of Falmouth. No address. I am writing this letter of recommendation for Thumbtastics. I have attended all classes at one point or another since June first, twenty twenty-one, including the aqua class. Her classes are exceptional, helpful in aiding me back to good health. I'm a three-year cancer survivor. I found her pool to be very helpful, and it was exceptionally clean and the pool area kept up. Everything is separate from her house. Classes are not overloaded. Aided to good health during these visit times. I would not have attended otherwise. This is from a Pamela Thompson. No address. I am a, I'm a big proponent of pool therapy. Having had many surgeries, the pool is my best friend for therapy, and Sandy's pool has been such a blessing. It is always clean and able, and always kept at a perfect temperature for working out in the water. I really hope whoever is reading this puts themselves in the shoes that benefit from water therapy. Sandy's pool has been a real blessing to many, and her expertise in dealing with people with all of her various therapy degrees has been top-notch. Thank you, Pamela Thompson. From November seventeenth, from Ilana Ronnie Mebane, M S N R N, out of Falmouth, no address given. It is an honor and great pleasure to have this opportunity to write this letter on behalf of Mrs. Sandy Miranda. Based on my professional association with her over the past several months, she has been found to be outstanding in her approach to working with others in business relations. She has also demonstrated a high degree of professionalism and trustworthiness with her work and to her business associates, making an invaluable asset to the town of Falmouth. She always carries out work with vigor, loyalty and resolve. Sandy is all, has a way with people, and she shines through in all that she does. As an example of her commitment and dedication to helping others, I would like to share a personal experience. Sandy ended my life during a time when I felt my world was spinning out of control due to a recent diagnosis of cancer. I was searching for a mechanism that would balance and stabilize my emotional health while working to become healthier and strong enough to deal with the physical components of treatment for cancer diagnosis. Having previously worked with a variety of fitness trainers, my faith and confidence in achieving this balance was minimal. It is important to say that I will be forever grateful to Sandy's amazing work. Her creative abilities as a fitness instructor have not only strengthened me but emotionally helped me achieve the type of balance required to live an all-around healthy and long life despite a diagnosis of this type. Sandy takes time from her obviously busy schedule to show compassion and offer assistance to individuals as needed. She goes out of her way to be inclusionary so that no one feels left behind and left out during her health fitness classes, supporting during her health fitness classes. Supporting those who are disabled is one of her greatest skills. She also extended herself in working hard to bring out the best in a close family member who is visually impaired with balance difficulties during our sessions. Without fail, she was noted, who always anticipate her ongoing needs during each class while providing assistance to her as required. Uh, Mrs. Miranda has worked wonders in my quest to achieve a healthier way of living. Uh, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, from a Michelle Peel. I'm pleased to write in support of Sandy Miranda and the Aqua Zumba Fitness Class at her pool. I have participated in many water aerobics classes at various locations in Massachusetts and Florida. This is the first time I've had an instructor who really knows how to provide an environment to help improve my health. Sandy teaches a variety of exercises that help me work on issues with my aging body. Her knowledge of how the body works and specific exercises necessary to improve problems, it made a difference in my ability to function daily with less pain and more mobility. Her pool is perfect for this kind of workout and her pride of ownership in her pool shows. It is always clean and the correct temperature. She expends considerable effort as well as time and money to achieve this. I can truly say it's well-designed. Her attitude is always positive, which helps me uh and helps the participants enjoy time we spend together as we work towards our fitness goals. I feel very fortunate to have found Sandy and her Thumbtastic Pool. I hope the facility will continue to be available as needed as it to the community. And uh, she's from West Falmouth, no address. Uh, Margaret Mitchell, who's a water safety instructor at forty-seven Surrey Lane in East Falmouth. November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. I'm writing this letter in reference to the pool operation at Sandy Miranda's pool that is located at her residence on Courier Road, East Falmouth. My name is Margaret Mitchell and I have been a resident of Falmouth since nineteen seventy-two and have been teaching swimming lessons for the town of Mashpee for over twenty years. I've enjoyed the opportunity to teach swimming lessons to young children, some special needs, future lifeguards, and adults. There's always been a challenge to secure a pool to accommodate these lessons. Falmouth also has this challenge. In my younger years, I swam for Knopscas Swim Club and finding a pool was very difficult. It was through my persistence that I encouraged the program director of the Mashpee Recreation Department to contact Ms. Miranda to discuss the possibility of holding swimming lessons at her pool. In the brief time that we conducted lessons, we were pleased with the condition of the pool and the pool setting. It was warm, clean, safe, and age-appropriate for our students. Parents were relieved to have their children in lessons, especially since the children had not been in lessons due to COVID. Additionally, there have been no issues with parking congestion or with any other interference within the neighborhood. In summary, it would be a great disservice to the children and adults of both Falmouth and Mashpee who have shown interest in the various programs that have been offered should this not be permitted. Uh, call me with any questions. On November sixteenth, from Joan Lyons, Whipper Will Circle in Mashpee. My name is Joan Lyons. I'm an American Red Cross Certified Water Safety Instructor working for the Town of Mashpee Recreation Department for the past seven years. During that time, Mashpee has had an agreement with Cape Cod Rehab in town to lease their indoor pool to provide swimming lessons to Cape Cod children. Since the pandemic, Cape Cod Rehab has instituted strict protocols at their facility. Unfortunately, Mashpee's Learn to Swim program was cut from their schedule due to the limited pool time. After town-wide search for an alternative turned up negative, we found Thumbtastic of Cape Cod in Falmouth. The owner was willing to rent the pool to Mashpee for the, for the Learn to Swim program at very convenient times. Needless to say, we were delighted. The pool is a perfect venue for our, our program. The facility is clean, well-designed, and appropriate for our Learn to Swim program. In addition to the pool, there is a bathroom and two dressing rooms, as well as a generous area around the pool to accommodate parents and grandparents. Parking is convenient, located just steps from the pool building. In the six weeks of operation of our Learn to Swim program, the accolades have been outstanding. Parents are delighted with the facility and are thrilled that their children are finally able to take swim lessons again. From their comments, it appears there are no other facilities in the area offering swim lessons at affordable prices. We were devastated when we heard that our Learn to Swim program would be canceled. There was tremendous unmet need for swimming lessons in the area. Thumbtastic of Cape Cod fulfills the need. If Falmouth approves the facility quickly, our Learn to Swim program can then be resumed. Thanks for your conven- uh, consideration of this request uh to approve reopening of Thumb- Thumbtastic of Cape Cod. Uh, this is from December. Dennis Reardon, one oh nine Redlands Road. To whom it may concern, I have been neighbors for many years with Sandy Miranda. She has always been respectful and con- and contributes to the neighborhood. She was always picking up trash from the neighborhood and especially from the boat ramp across the street from our house. It would be a shame to have the town shut down her small business. Her business does not bother me at all. I hardly uh even know when she has swimming classes. She's a very hardworking individual, should be given a break or work with her to be able to stay open and operate her classes in therapy sessions as clients are needed. December thirteenth, to whom it may concern, this is from a Susan Groig.
This chairman, can we stipulate that there is a certain amount of letters in approval? We've got a sense of uh, uh, on either side of it. How many more do you have, Bob?
Uh, let me see if there's anything new in them. Uh...
Are they all commending her for the professionalism? Are they in support?
Yeah, let me just uh, yeah, this, this person just does water aerobics and again, a professionalism. Um, from Nancy Groden, actually, she already wrote before in a little dream. Uh, last one would be from a Jean Baumfleck. Again, from Mashpee. Um, to allow zoning, they were unable to continue to provide community access to the pool at her residence. I went initially to Cape Cod Rehab in Mashpee. However, I soon realized that after the point I wanted to do more than one session a week, I needed space for laps. Uh, this was before COVID. After COVID broke out, I tried to work out there but was enforced because of safe distancing and basically she used the pool facility Uh, then there's a uh, and then uh, Ms. Miranda uh put a certificate. Uh, which is a Pool Operator Primer Certificate from Pool and Hot Tub Alliance. Uh, maybe she can tell us what the certificate is. Uh, and then there's a copy from ninety-three. This is for something else, two on a lot. So yeah, I, I think that's it for the letters. She can go over any additional information that she thinks she needs.
All right, and before we get underway, Scott will appoint you as voting number on this. And uh, for those of you in the hallway, if you are here uh for this application, there are three seats in the front row here. There might be one or two on the far side. I just want to make sure. Yep. Whoever's here for this hearing, I just want to make sure you're in the room or you can at least hear what's going on. We good for anyone else out there?
Uh, just one additional note because it has to do with the, with the fencing. Um, this was from February ninth. Uh, this is from Matthew Hawkins. My name is Matthew Hawkins of MTH Woodworks. I have been hired by Sandra Miranda of Thumbtastic Pool of Thumbtastic to remove the existing fence surrounding the property, one oh five Redlands Road, East Falmouth. It was installed too close to Courier Road. I am installing the new fence ten feet from Courier, uh, the whole length of her property.
All right. Thank you, Bob. All right, and Ms. Miranda.
My name is Sandra Miranda. Um, I'm the resident of one oh five Redlands Road. Um, built my pool there. Um, I, I will admit, we had COVID and I used to teach at a couple of pools in Falmouth. And when they got closed down during COVID, I didn't know what I was gonna do because I lost half my business. And I was afraid that my spa was gonna, you know, should be shut down because I didn't have any money. Um, so I worked on getting an EIDL loan and I talked my husband into building a pool at my house. At the time, I trusted and relied that he knew how to get all the permits and all the documents. And so I left that upon, you know, the contractors and all, all the people that were working to make the pool. Um, and so then once the pool is, was completed, I opened it up in May. Um, I even had a sign out front, a small sign out front because I try to respect my neighbors. And um, I started teaching classes in May. It was great. I, I'm, I'm the hard part about, and I think that my butters don't understand a lot, is I'm not asking to be a why. I'm not asking to be every day of the week, open, operational, seven days a week. Um, it's sixteen hours. It's four classes I teach. It's um, my, my other teacher teaches two, two classes twice a week. And then the swim lessons were two hours, four days a week. And then once a month, I taught a special needs adult class in the pool. So sixteen hours, if you want to say. Um, it's not all the time. And um, you know, some of the people that said that, it's um, six hours. It's six people at night, at six o'clock at night when it's already dark. So the kids shouldn't be playing basketball at that time. Um, and then during the day, it's um, while the kids are at school. So anyways, um, when I, when I built the pool and we made that, um, I let the swimming um people come along, the Mashpee Rec. And um, Heidi had called me and said, you don't have a permit. And I said, oh, no. And I called my husband and I said, we don't have a permit. And he said, oh, we have to do the final inspection. So he called up and they came and they did, they did an inspection. So when I got the paper, I saw a permit. I took a picture. I sent it to Heidi. I thought it was all set. So I kept going. Um, going forward, thinking I'm trying to be an honest person. I'm doing the right thing. I had no idea it was not commercial. So going forward, after I found out and got seized and distished by the Board of Health, um, I said, well, what could I do? What could I possibly do to fix this? Besides ripping it down after paying two hundred thousand dollars almost to make a pool, um, a beautiful, clean pool that we need in Falmouth, that um, you know, it's four foot, there's no deep end, um, it has a bathroom, it has a shower, it has um, a place to change, things that I could never find at the pools that I had worked at. And um, and I wanted to help people. That's what I do. Um, so I tried to do the best I could. Um, the parking lots that were made, I didn't make them. Um, and I had no idea I wasn't allowed to do that with Courier Road. And then when I found out that my septic system is actually where one of the things and people were driving over it and actually people were cutting through, you know, Amazon trucks and the post office and everybody started. I actually put a um basketball net and I put my trash there. That's why the trash is actually there to actually block people from being able to drive through now. Um, I tried to hire somebody to actually move the fence because when I found that the fence um was on the right-of-way for the town, um, I have a person that's gonna move it five feet and fix that. And I worked with the engineer department. I gave them a bond check and I told them I would put the seat in lawn. It's just unfortunate. We had a snowstorm and that the ground became frozen. I bought all the stuff to, for the fencing. It's on the side. I have pictures of everything that I bought to fix all the things I needed to. Um, I'm trying to go backwards and I know it's hard and I understand that I have a lot of people that are angry or think that I did something purposely that I didn't do. Um, I made something to try to be good and I guess it was wrong. So what I'm asking is to try to get help to make it right so that I can provide to the people. My dream is to help people, not to hurt people. And I don't think that my neighbors understand that. So anyways, um, with the Board of Health, they came over and did a complimentary inspection for me to try to help that. And I had a list of all the things that they had asked me to do. And I took it upon myself to hire people and work with people and make all of that happen. We took out a slider. We made a self-closing, self-locking door so that would be ADA accessible for handicap, um, which is my dream anyways. I'm trying to work with this CALS, which is in Falmouth. Um, it's ALS, for ALS people. Um, because I have clients I work with that have ALS and I'm, I want to be able to help them swim. I want them to feel good before they die. Um, I work with cancer patients. I work with all different types of disabilities because in fact, I used to be disabled. I used, people don't know that about me, but um, uh, let's see, what else did I do? Oh, I was able to find asphalt. Even though all the plants were closed, we found one. And so I put a parking spot for a handicap and a ramp that would go right up into the door. Um, it just extended right from my driveway because I don't want asphalt everywhere. So I tried to change it and make it so that it was reasonable. So it goes right up to the door. And um, so with the fence taking off both of the Courier Road, there's no, you know, no more access to there. Redlands Road, you can go right up. I have a really long driveway and I took pictures of everything to show that there still could be cars that could come up, plenty of room for, you know, ten, fourteen cars for an hour class. Um, and it, I don't think it would hurt anybody. There's two different ways to get to my house and there's also um the boat ramp parking lot, which is public access to be able to park there. Um, whether somebody opposes to any of that, I don't know. I've tried to think of every idea and every way possible to make this happen with the pool. Um, I put up a generator. So um, used my money for a generator so that in case the pool would always be the way it's supposed to be. I put up security cameras to help make it um, so be watched in case anybody hurt themselves. Um, let's see, driveway, the parking lot, and then the E-Engineer Department. Yeah, that's about it. I don't know what else I'm supposed to say. I'm new at all this stuff. Um, and I, I have a room full of people. I don't know who's for me, who's against me, but I do, do know I have some, the swimming instructors here and I do have some clients here and I have some neighbors here. And um, and I'm certainly don't want to make this into a, a war. I, I want to make it so that it works for everyone. Um, but my house, where it's at, the reason why I put it on Courier Road is because I didn't want to bother the neighborhood, but I didn't know I wasn't allowed to. So now I'm willing to change that, make it however it needs to be so that it can be accessed but not hurt the neighborhood. I, I, I'm down at the boat ramp cleaning it all the time. So it's kind of ironic when a butter says that my trash is everywhere. I'm sorry that if the, the wind blew and it did that. I'm usually out there. If I'm not over here doing a massage or helping somebody try to lose weight or do something, I'm over there cleaning up my trash, believe me. It's hard to do. Um, one of the guys suggested that he could help me build something for the trash if that's gonna be the problem. But the trash will be moved. Once the fence goes there, that's only there to, to stop it from, um, people from driving there.
So, so just, just briefly, just for process, because I know, because you said like it started and things changed.
Yep.
And I know it seems like you're putting more and more money into it. Um, as far as a home business goes, uh, it, it pretty much has to meet the criteria that allows, what we have that allows a home business. So where you'd want to start is you'd want to start with, um, what is the bylaw for a home business and what are the criteria? So that you make sure that you meet that criteria before you put, you know, more monies and more efforts into something else to meet those options first. And I guess my question is, um, I know you've done all these extra improvements and the health departments come out. Um, has anybody within that entire process told you that you would need to find out if you actually even qualify for a home business before they're having you pay for more improvements like ADA or adding, you know, adding doors or windows? Because the, as far as home businesses go, the, the bylaw is, it's not that hard, like if you were looking at the bylaw?
I actually read it.
Yeah, so, so like, so like, just for example, um, they really don't allow parking for more than two cars. So your first, if you read that, your first issue would be if you just said like you, you might have fourteen cars or you could make space for it. Well, the first question would be, um, could I even be allowed to go beyond what the bylaw says I could have? Or it, it says that if you're doing a home business, that the um, the, the location where you're doing the actual gym or pool can't be more than thirty percent of the living space of the property. So if I was just looking at a plot plan and I just looked at what that addition you put that encloses the pool and I just calculated the, the width and the length, that space is above thirty percent. So there, there's certain things written in the bylaw that um, we can't give a per, like we couldn't say the bylaw allows it could be thirty percent. We'll let it be fifty percent because we just don't have the purview to do that. So there's certain things when you read these bylaws that if you see numbers like that or you see a number of cars or criteria or it talks about front yard parking or some of the issues that you ran into that you didn't know, like a driveway is too close to five feet, um, that's kind of all written in that section. I, I just don't want you to get in a situation where you're, you're doing it in reverse, where you're now doing more changes until you find out if you even qualify under this bylaw. Because you don't want to put more money in if, if we may not have the right to give a permit for what you want because it goes above what the minimums are. So, you know, the process is just beginning. I just, I hate to see someone putting more expenses into something until you really know, you know, yes or no, or this is doable. And I don't want you to get in any, you know, more financial interest and, you know, I appreciate like the ADA, but there's no need to do ADA compliance unless you know if you qualify for the bylaw.
I understand. Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. So actually, I did, I did go and um, talk to a lawyer and I did get a bunch, actually five different lawyers, um, to try to get information. Um, a lot of them are really tied up with zoning issues. Um, so anyways, um, what they said is in, in that bylaw, there's a part that says other. There's a little piece that says other. a little piece that says other, and that I could go fall onto that other part, and when you say about the 30% of the house, so I actually measured the house and measured the, the pool house, and yeah, if the pool house is bigger than my house, but it's shared, we also use it. So it's shared living space, and so the actual part I use for my business is just the pool itself, in a small little area that the people put their stuff.
So do they have to?
20%.
So do they have to walk through that area to get to the pool? I mean, how, how do you get into the pool?
If you get into pool.
You go in, you know, you go, let's say you, they open it in an outside door, however you're handling it. They walk into that location. Because they have to enter it, and now they're using that space, you can't say we're only counting the middle of the room. Can I say what I'm saying? Like, you can't say, "Well, I'm just using the center of the room for the 30%. I'm discounting all the other space that they have to use to get there." Because that's part of access for the business, like if you did an ADA compliant where you added a doorway. So that person is going to have to enter through that space. So you can't just say they're only using the pool, because they have to enter and use that area, you know, to access the facility. So I understand the thought behind it, where we're only doing classes in the pool. I don't know how you, I just, we've done so many home businesses over the years with little businesses and businesses, I don't know how you would get by that.
Okay. But yeah, when they access the door, right there are the chairs, that's where they leave their stuff, and then they access the pool, they're right there.
Yeah, so, so the space that you're, so when they say 30% of your floor area, that's where this occupation occurs. So you couldn't say, "I'm only counting the center of a room," that it's occurring there, and it's not occurring in the surrounding area of the room that they have to use. If it were, if it worked that way on these percentages, every small business that we've ever gave a permit to could use a house. They could have them walk through the main house, or main doors, or do other areas. But, but we're locked in a certain thing, so I just want you to know there's limitations that we're bound with, as far as the way the bylaw is specifically written. Doesn't give us a lot of leeway.
I understand that. So what being the, is, so if my pool house is considered the part, and it's definitely bigger than my house, does it mean I need to make my house three times bigger to make it?
So in my opinion, and again, we haven't done this whole series out, in my opinion, if you had put this application in, the first thing I would have said to you before you spent money on the application, was, "It doesn't look like you qualify for the 30%." So please make sure that you qualify for that, before I take your money. Or, you know, you can't have more than two extra park, you know, more parking spaces. So if you're submitting letters, and, and there's beautiful letters of support on what you do and help people, and I completely understand, and I feel for you on that. But if they're mentioning the letters that you have, you know, 10, 12 people, or like you just said, "I have room for 14 cars," we can't give a permit for 14 cars. We just can't.
Would you agree, she probably needs a legal analysis?
I just, I just.
I mean, you gave all the practice.
I just think that you actually don't even qualify for the bylaw. I think, I think somebody has said you can get this, but I don't know how you get, I don't know how you even qualify for this. I mean, we see a lot of applications that are very close, or people can adjust. But if you could only use 30% of that house, and you're saying the 30% with the, with the layout you listed us, the pool itself, without even talking about the surrounding area that's part of the structure, if the pool itself has already got you over the 30%?
No, 20. Pool is 20.
So, but you're just talking the, the pool without any of the surrounding.
Pool in a small area where they could put their stuff.
And then there's mention in the letters of, and this, I'm just going by the letters, even of the support of the restroom facilities and the changing rooms. So right away, if I read that in a letter, I now have to add the restrooms and the changing rooms into the 30% area that you're doing the business, because they've stated that's how they've used it. Or if a, you know, if a, if a, if a commercial, if a, if a business outside of our town, and I know according to the letters they contacted you, said, "We'd like to now do our program there." Shame on them, they didn't find out before putting you through stuff that this even qualifies. I, you know, there's these beautiful letters and stuff, I understand, I just, I think this is really what's going to define whether this is even available or not. I mean, half of the other stuff, yeah, you've got stuff in road layouts, and you can't access Courier Road, but with that, even throwing all that stuff aside, if you can't meet the 30% maximum, we can't give you a permit. So I would see if you could do, even for an application, if I was doing the application, I would see if my entire business, bathrooms, restrooms, access, only fits 30%. And if I couldn't get it in the 30%, then I would know I just can't, couldn't get a permit for it. You know, this, when they do these criterias, you do it for a reason, there's, there's homes all over town that have pools, everywhere. And one of the reasons, again, in my opinion, that we don't have this happening in the pools all over town, is they wouldn't qualify for this either. They just wouldn't qualify for the, for the individual items of the... So I just don't want you to get past this. I'd rather have you focus on, how do I meet A, B, C, D, E, and F? And then if we could check off all of them and you meet them, well then, we're allowed to give a permit, if that's the decision of the board. If you can't meet them, we don't have purview to approve.
Uh, could we, could we entertain a variance?
No, because a variance is based on land, so on a variance, we have to look at...
Okay.
No, 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 I'm just saying, because the audience may not know, so in variance, we have to look at the shape of a lot. Is it an unusually shaped lot that's different than any one else? Then we have to look at the geographic of the lot. Is there something specific? Does it have a high slope, or something very unique that other properties don't have? And we can use hardship, but we're limited. It's hardship to the building. So if you had vacant land, and this is the only way you could actually build a house to even use it, we can sometimes go to hardship, but we can't go to hardship for, "It's because I want to run a business." It's a different type of hardship criteria.
What about hardship now, I have huge utility bills.
So hardship, the way it's, hardship, the way it's related to a definition for variance, is different than I or you, anyone else would think of hardship. You would think of hardship as, you know, "I either have a hard time doing, making funding, or doing something." Hardship on a variance is different. It's, it's limited to the location and the land. And you already have a home there, which is a residence, so you couldn't say it's the hardship, "I don't have a residence." And you already have a pool in existence, so you couldn't say that the hardship is, "I couldn't put in a pool." And I know you've talked to all these attorneys, and I just honestly do not know why any of them haven't just said to you, "Let's just look at six items, and see how you look on this," and then they'll give you your best opinion.
Yeah. Well, we should stick it to...
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, we should stick it to board questions.
Yeah. Ms. Miranda, I, I hope you realize that one thing has nothing to do, it's very commendable, all of the support that you have, and your professionalism, and, and what you're trying to do, so please, don't take that as a pers, you know, that's why this board is so intricate about certain things, so please, don't take this as a slight to your profl, professionalism or any of that. I have a simple question. We have a, a, a plan that's dated from Walworth and Associates, 8/21/2020. Now, was that to construct the pool as well?
Yes, I'm, I'm almost sure.
At any point, did you, did you express your intentions to the people that drew the plan, that this was for a business, or was it at that time?
See, it wasn't me that was doing it. It wa, it was my husband that was running that.
Is your husband here? Is he here?
I actually have a restraint order, and he's not allowed to be here, and he's out of the house.
I don't need to know that, then, okay. I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry. Um, I, I was just curious, you would like, I, I would love to have been privy to some of that conversation, when they, when they drew these for you, and if they knew what your intentions were, because I would have loved, if that was the case, them to kind of counsel whoever they were talking to about what you're having to go through right now. I just wanted to assure you, it's, it's very commendable, you know, the letters of support and what you do.
I appreciate that.
So I don't want you to take that as any kind of slight, zoning is very intricate, and...
I understand, I, I don't, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott, and I'll go this way. Scott, didn't want to forget you on the end. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, to reemphasize, Mr. Solinsky, we're very empathetic. I mean, these are so difficult, when somebody moves forward to try and do the right thing in their mind, and what you've done here. There are some high bar hurdles that Bob outlined, and I think that it's imperative that, that we did, did see some communication from your attorney, that you were going to review the tape of tonight's meeting, and then you would come back in front of us, and I think that, that's really the, the next step for you, is to take the feedback that you heard from the board this evening, and regroup with your attorney.
Okay, thank you.
And we wish you the best.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Scott. James, anything?
Thank you.
Jerry?
Just reiterate what Scott says, I think it's time for legal opinion on the, the variance, if, if it's possible, in the zoning issues. There's a lot of other stuff, sheds with the road and things like that. I don't, the board may want to get into it tonight, but I think Bob's right.
And understanding that we are a board of relief, so there's a process on that side of the table, and one on this side of the table, and if you have legal representation, the people that are, that are more versed, and look at the bylaw in different ways, and could advise you, and re, and come back to us. I'm not saying we will or we won't, I think you'd have a better chance with somebody reviewing the ins and the outs of this, and...
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Can I just say, on the shed, it's gone?
It's two of them?
No, both gone.
Okay.
Gone.
Good.
No sheds.
All right, so Ms. Miranda, I will turn it over to public comment. With so many people here, I have a few of whom do want to offer some comment tonight, but before I do turn it over to public comment, just noting that Bob went to great lengths to read all those letters already into the record, and it sounds like we will be continuing the hearing to another date to accommodate for Ms. Miranda's attorney to review the tape of tonight, and then provide further legal counseling. So as far as public comment tonight, I just ask if there's anything new or anything not mentioned in those letters that have already been read into the record. So is anyone out there with anything new to provide? Yes, please, come on up.
My name is Joan Bates. I live at 29 Redlands Road. My husband and I sent a letter to you, which you have, and Sandy, amazing.
Sorry, when, when you speak, you have to speak through the board, not to the applicant directly.
Got it. Understood. The concern that I have, and that other members of my community have, is the traffic situation at that location, it is really bad. And I don't mean traffic, but the, I brought this map, which shows actually the, the site. So this is Redlands Road. It bends dramatically here. The shrubs and the trees in this area prevent good visual analysis for the drivers, and little children live all around here, and they play in the street. The basketball, you know, the basketball thing on the street is common all the way up Redlands, and certainly, both directions on Redlands. Courier, this is the road that was in dispute as far as entrances here. It's confusing to me at this point, if driveways would be allowed there, they, they haven't been in the past. I li, I lived here for almost 22 years, and when we first knew Courier, it was a dirt road, and I think at that time, there were some driveways to homes that were built on Redlands, but it was a different situation. So I think people driving down Courier think, "Oh, it's okay, probably that was her situation, it's okay, I can put a driveway in." It's not the case, it's a town road now, it's different. Anyway, that's an aside, but the point is that this is a very dangerous area. Those of us who drive it every day know that it is. We slow down, we look carefully. That's the biggest worry that I have. It, nothing to do with her pool operation, or anything to do with that. I had no idea she was doing a pool operation. So that's, that's the whole concern that I have, and it directly applies, in my opinion, to your own rules regarding safety, that the ways providing access are adequate and can safely accommodate the traffic of the home business to and from the site. The Board of Appeals shall consider the cumulative effect of allowing more than one home business located in any given neighborhood, taking into account the density of the neighborhood, the distance separating each home business, which in this case would be one, and the nature of each home business, and the effects on a but if any. So my point is, we are a residential neighborhood. Basically, a quarter to a half an acre is a common size, and there are homes all along, homes everywhere. So it's not as though it's like three random houses on a country road, and what difference would it make? Not at all. It's, it's a very intensely residential neighborhood. That's, that's the whole point. It's got nothing to do with the desirability of having a business like this in Falmouth. It sounds like a great idea, but it's just the location doesn't sound like the right location. So that's, that's, I appreciate the listening to me.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Anyone else at all?
My name's Catherine Crew. I live at 46 Pine Ridge Road, in East Falmouth. Well, if, if, we can't let one person stand up and complain, and, and not let all of us stand up. There's so many of us that want this and need it, so I'm one of those.
Did you submit a written, a written letter?
No, I didn't know I needed to, should have done that.
It's, it's not mandatory, and we certainly appreciate you coming tonight. All right, anyone else?
I'm Margaret Mitchell. I did write a letter, but I'd like to first, thank you for how professionally that you addressed this matter. It's pretty emotional, as you could see by the number of people here. I am the first captain of the Knopscro Swim Club in town, so I was about 15, 16 years old, and for years, even though we were told that the, a pool was coming to town, it never did. I mean, we're 44 years out, you know, we're hearing that, you know, the YMCA will be here. Well, I was told that that was going to happen a long time ago. Regardless of that, I concur what Kathy just said, there are a lot of people in here that are affected by this, both pro and con. I think the intention was very good for Ms. Miranda to do this. Unfortunately, as you pointed out, that is a case of now asking for forgiveness instead of permission. So I think that with her, with your direction, that was so professionally said, I think that if possible, she will go and do what she has to do to make this work. I, I'm a former phys ed teacher in Mashpee, and I was one of the swim instructors, no more, we never had any more than five children in a pool at a time, so I, I didn't see the traffic that people were talking about, because it was carpooling. So if I had a class of five children, usually there might have been four cars because of carpooling. We, I never had a class that had 12 people, that, that was inferred. So there's some homework that needs to be done, but again, when this, when this project was shut down, not only were children affected, but there was potential classes for, as Sandy said, for special need folks, for, also for an adult male class that I was trying to run, and Haven for Healing. If people know about that organization, deal with people that are in recovery from cancer and are still experiencing camp, uh, cancer, was trying to also find a place to have a teacher, certified teacher, as well as a location for a pool. Knopscro Swim Club, for years, went from the base, the pool out there, to MMA, to Shoreway Acres. It's not... Acres. It's not a very easy place to find a swimming pool. And being a pool snob, it's very hard to find a pool that meets the health and safety and cleanliness standard that Sandy's pool met. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else at all? All right. Back to the board.
So, Noreen, on a continuance, what's our next available date?
On March 10.
Can we ask the applicant how much time she thinks she's going to need to get?
Yeah. So, our next available date for a continuance is going to be March 10. Do you feel that gives you enough time to...
Yeah. Can I submit the picture?
Don't say yes if you think that's what we... If you need more time, say you need more time.
Or check with your attorney.
Right. I mean, you might...
You know, we can schedule it now for March 10, and then if you think something happens a later date, let us know.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Now, anything you want to submit now, I can stamp into the file before we make a motion. Thank you. And then, I guess then I would make a motion to continue this hearing to March 10.
Second.
All right. Motion to continue the hearing to March 10, made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Miranda, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, too.
And the board will take a five-minute break.
Our net, the main and service are now shown as the plans as would be required. Scott McGann, revised comments from health. The revised plans are find and eliminate the offices as a bedroom. So now four bedrooms in the two units. On the remainder of the engineering comments, the application was reviewed to impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Show would drive as a public right of way in this area. No alterations proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. East Falmouth Highway is a state right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes to the right of way would require a permit with Mass DOT. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town departments. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of butters for public rights of way. They were asking for gutted and down supposed to infiltration devices for the dormer, but that was revised. So they now have dry wells. And on that referral, on the revised referral from health, it is now to two bedroom units, which gives you the four bedrooms. The current plans had shown them as two three bedroom units. I mean, the old plan. Project is outside Concom jurisdiction. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. And the only additional from water is the existing home has a one inch service fed from a 20 inch main in East Falmouth Highway. There is a letter.
Is that all there was on the one inch main?
Yeah.
It wasn't bringing in the house and none of that in the referral?
No, the referral just said that it was on the plans, the revised referral.
Right.
There's a note here from Michael Steele to whom it may concern. My name is Michael Steele. I am the former owner of the property 53 East Falmouth Highway. East Falmouth, Mass. Our family owned this property since 1927. This property has been used as a two-family residence since the 1950s. I sold the property to Hung Lang Dai on April 30th, 2021. So just a quick question, Irene. So was there any, was there, was there a question then that they didn't think it was a two-family or why is that?
No, we just saw it verification.
Okay.
For historical purposes.
And it is zoned as a The assessors department, just for their records, does describe it as a two-family.
Anything else, Bob?
Nothing.
All right, thank you. All right, and before we get underway, Jerry, I'll appointing you as a voting member on this one.
Mr. Chairman and dear board, good evening. My name is Alan Yu. I'm the registered architect in Mestruces, representing my client, Mrs. Dai, the owner of 53 East Falmouth Highway in his, you know, in Falmouth, Mestruces. So we're seeking a special permit to construct a dormer, a shed dormer on the second floor, and also a deck slash fire stair egress from the second floor. Existing dwelling was constructed, you know, originally in 1927 with one family on first floor and the other on the second. Two floors combined to, to be 1,800 square feet excluding the basement. As you can see from the pictures, you know, I mean, it's a little unfortunate, the house was, you know, has not been well maintained for the past few years. And needs some love. And my, my client purchased the property in the beginning, in the frame of 2021 and started renovation. We had a few challenges. As you can see, the second floor is really a half floor by today's definition with the, you know, with the shed dormer. If I may show you the existing floor plan. As you can see, so there is a, if you follow my cursor, an existing bathroom, which doesn't meet the current standards at all. It's so, it's way less than 6A, the minimum, you know, setting requirement for, you know, by today's Mestruces, M80, CMR and building codes. And if you look at the second floor, there are only the only way up to this level is from the backside of the house and it lacks second means of egress. So we're proposing let me go to the side point real quick. We're proposing a new dormer at roughly 210 square feet and also a deck with egress stair in the backyard to provide a second means of egress. Let me show you some 3D images so you can see more clearly about the areas we're adding. So in this, in this Axon view, if you follow my cursor, this is what we're adding. And this is on the other side. And this is the stair that we're adding for fire egress, provide a second means of egress. This land is not, is a non-conforming lot. We're not meeting the 25 feet setback, you know, as per existing condition. So this is what we're here and this, this closes our application and we're happy to answer any questions to the board and public behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, any questions?
No questions at this time.
James?
No questions, thank you.
Scott?
None for me.
Bob?
None.
None, thank you.
All right.
Chairman, I move to close.
Public comment, too.
It was a nice try. Agreed with the try. It was a good try.
You're not going to get it that easy.
No questions from the board, so or any public comment, any public comment, questions, comments or concerns. Didn't quite see who had the first hand, but come on up.
Good evening. My name is Jerome Renfro. My wife and I have lived across the street at 46 East Falmouth Highway for 45, 47 years. Knew Mrs. Maderas, my wife knew Mrs. Maderas very well, who was Mike Steele's wife's mother or grandmother or mother. I'm not really sure. That's how the family's connected there. But we have never seen that as a two-family home, ever. In all the years we've lived there, it just, it's, I mean, I, when did it become a two-family home? And is it a legal two-family home? You know. I don't know. I'm just, I'm confused that, that Mike was able to sell it as one because, like I said, I don't think it ever was. Whether 50 years ago, somebody lived upstairs. I mean, I don't know. I don't think there's a kitchen up there. And so you, I mean, you'd have to totally make it a a total separate apartment. And I believe there's stairs inside. Well, I know there's stairs inside to go upstairs, obviously, because it's the only way to get up there. But, you know, I commend them for the work they're doing on it. I mean, the house needs a lot of love. It's old. And it's going to be, it's, it's a beautiful home, but it's, it's pretty much all single-family units in that entire area. I mean, there's, I think there's an apartment down John Parker Road a little ways. But other than that, I mean, it's, well, and there's one down closer to Acapescot also near, across the tuna lube. But the surrounding homes are all single-family units. And that's really all I got to say. I mean, if, if, if it's a legitimate place, just because Mike said it was a two-family home since 1927, doesn't necessarily make it a two-family home. I mean, if, if, if the board goes with, you know, they follow procedure and it ends up being what it is, I mean, that's the way it is. I mean, you can't, can't not will it not to happen if it's not legit.
So for the record, is it just a question? Are you in support?
Well, I just want to know, is it actually, was it ever legally a two-family unit? I know as long as we've lived there, there's only ever been Mrs. Maderas. And then it was her, either, I think it was her granddaughter who's married to Mike, is still married to Mike Steele. But just because he claims it was, doesn't, doesn't make it a two-family home.
So you're looking for some kind of documentation that just shows?
Yeah, that it's, if it's, if it's legit, then I, it's, it is what it is. But to just all of a sudden, I mean, I realize this housing need in Falmouth, but I mean, what prevents everybody from doing that then? I mean, we have a huge house. And it, it wouldn't be something we would do, but so it's more just kind of opening eyes and knowing, is this legit? Is, is it a legit place to have a multiple dwelling? I mean, that's really all I got.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The, the assessors' records did note it as a two-family.
Yeah, so the assessors' records notated as a two-family, but when we've had some of these before, we usually ask for more than the assessors' records on what their proof was. It's usually some kind of other documentation or
How would they document it, Bob? Deeds?
Well, we had one, geez, we had one where at Davisville, they found people that either knew the family back then or something, or sometimes they found old photos. I guess my only question I would have here is, I'm going by the letter that says, you know, I'm the former owner and our family is on this in 1927, but the testimony we're getting from someone else is, I guess it's his family because it's my marriage, but it was somebody else's.
What's the date on the assessors? Notification of two-family?
So just, just for the board's purposes, when this application came in, we did ask specifically what, if they would be able to find some information. So it was not until after the purchase took place and this current owner owned the property, where they were able to get a letter from the former owner that was attesting to the fact that it has been used as, as a two-family. And I think perhaps for the butters, if there was members of the same family that were using a separate living unit, it would still appear to be one family, albeit that you'd have the two separate units. Right.
That's why I'm looking for the date. The date of the assessor.
The, the owner's here if you want to.
Sure.
Hi, sir. I, actually, I talked to
If you don't mind speaking behind the microphone, sorry. Everyone at home can hear you.
Yeah. Actually, I talked to our assessor office.
Name? Your name?
Oh, my name is Hung Lang Dai, current, you know, I'm the owner of the house now. I talked to the, our assessing office and they emailed me, it's like this, the record can trace back to 1978, I think. That's the, that's the, you know, document he can trace on. Since then, since 1978, it used as two-family in our record.
That's, that's the assessors' record?
Yeah, assessors' record.
So does that say 1978 there?
Well, these are basically just the last record card. So it shows the, you know, original family, Maderas way back, that it was a family use. And then it, it, it just has the two-family code, but it doesn't show. I mean, I wouldn't get from the card. I mean, the assessors would probably give me some other description, but I couldn't get from the card when it switched or when they did their change.
So when you bought the property, ma'am, was it, was it was it advertised to you as a two-family?
Yes, it's a
Did they give you any supporting documentation at the PNS or any of that?
No, the, it said legal two-family. They provided the document to me, but that document actually from assessing office.
So the, so the, so the description that they gave you when you bought it was that it was a legal two-family?
Yes.
But they didn't give you anything showing how they came up that it was a legal two-family?
Bob, who's, who's they? What are you talking about? Assessors' department?
So, no, what she's saying is that the seller, when she bought it, said it was a legal two-family.
The real estate?
And the real estate agent said it was a legal two-family?
Yes.
But did they hand you any kind of a document showing that or did they just say it's a, it's the assessors' department shows it as a two-family?
Yeah, they sent me a document, but that document actually it's same, same as the
Same as the
document the assessing office sent to me.
So that's all you, that's all they provided and then Mike Steele's testimony after the fact?
Yes.
And just for discussion, actually, the assessor, unless there's deed records, is only assessing to the value of the house.
Yeah.
I mean, they've told us that on a number
They've told us a hundred times that we can't use their record as a
I mean, it's just one more thing, but it's a but if the owner said it was a two-family.
What's the zoning?
If you look under that next page. It says Tiora Russ, the second page.
I guess one of the questions while they're looking that up is if we continue this
I saw that. So residential C wouldn't help us because it's not a GR or it wasn't. Residential C just means single-family.
Right. So we did ask them to see if they would be able to get a letter from the former owner to attest that it had been used as a two-family.
Would the deeds have anything about being a single-family or two-family?
No.
I don't know, just as a matter of
Not if it was, unless it was a separate, like two buildings on a
I, I don't know.
But if testimony by the neighbor was that it was the Maderas house, which is the wife of Steele. I don't know, is there any of the Maderas's left in that family that used it or neighbors? If you had any kind of a neighboring family or somebody that was familiar with the house back when, they could do
And we, and we've certainly used that
Used that before. We used it in a test record?
Historical testimony in situations like this.
I mean, the seller's le- letter was issued after the sale. So I guess you couldn't claim that they were gaining anything by issuing the letter because the sale had already
Oh, no, I
No, but according to the
As prospective buyer, I would certainly try to, to, to nail that down prior to buying the house.
Yeah.
What we're saying.
Yeah, because according to the applicant, the owner now, that's what, how they presented it to them. That it was a legal two-family. So usually when you see a legal two-family, you see some kind of a when was it switched over? When was there a permit? Was it a family conversion? Was it limited just to a family conversion where it's only for family members and they can't be used as rental units? I don't know. I looked at it for the main structure, to be honest. I, I looked at it just for the
And I don't see where there'd be any way to get any more documentation other than what we have. We have an
Well, it'd be
We have a document from Mike Steele, the previous owner. And then we have an assessors' card. But then you have direct testimony from an butter across the street that's familiar with the property as well.
And they knew the Maderas family that Mike married into. So what the applicant would have to at least try to do is see if there was any neighbor or butter old photographs, just to give a shot if there's anyone that would do a, or actually on Michael Steele. I would make this an affidavit. I wouldn't make this
He has, he has, he has no requirement to do that now.
No, no, but if, but if
Well, you can't make him do that.
No, 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 no. What I would say is if, to prove, if he's submitting this, and I was an owner, we're looking at it as the town, I would consider this if it was an affidavit. I wouldn't consider this just as a letter written down and
What, what about Makes it a little different, sorry, Jerry. It makes it a little different that it happened after the sale of the house. What about the, a letter from the real estate agent? They have a certain culpability. They marketed it as a
They could, they could ask for a letter from the real estate agent, the same thing, an affidavit from the agent, and then he would have to say how he got the information that it was a legal two-family.
Would it be appropriate to give them a little more time and continue this?
Yeah, I would.
To get, to try to get some more information?
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be.
I mean, because we can go back and forth all night on this. We still have the same amount of cards on the table.
Yeah, I
Well, then the question is what, what, what documentation, what could they get?
Affidavit.
Affidavits.
That would satisfy the board at this point.
Affidavit.
And if, if, I mean, I don't
And the real estate agent, I think.
I guess it's still open. You knew the Maderas family, right? Who had it? You said Maderas? You knew the, yeah, the family was, I'm sorry, I, I just, I didn't get the name.
The original, excuse me, the original lady that lived there was a Maderas and my wife knew her quite well. I mean,
Is she deceased?
Oh, yes.
Was there any part of that family that's still alive that could attest to what your
Uh, actually, actually Sherri went to school with one of her grandsons and
So maybe, you know, something from the family itself that may have said, I knew when it was used as
Is there a kitchen up there? There's a kitchen up there. Really?
And, and that certainly would give you guys some time to, to speak to your real estate agent, to see what kind of information you guys could get to support your argument as well. And I'd suggest talking to other neighbors. There may be other people that could offer You know, just to be fair.
Sherri can, Sherri can reach out to, I can't think of his name. Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd make that suggestion that we, we
Motion to continue to let the applicant have time to see if they can get any kind of affidavit or additional documentation.
I'd second Mr. Dugan's motion.
If, if the board sees fit that this is legitimate, I mean, I'm not here to squash anything, but you definitely got to keep a handle. Next thing you know, people are claiming somebody lived in their garage.
We do, we do keep our eye on these sorts of things.
That's what we do.
We do keep our
Oh, I know, I know, I know. That was, that was nothing that you guys have been just
No, I completely understand and there, there is some documentation that we look to
We're giving both parties opportunity to gain information.
Yeah. Yeah, I can have Sherri look into it.
No, no worries.
Now where you can at least see. Yeah.
Just from an architect's standpoint, if I may go back to the photo, I just want to so let me have another one. Slide it better. So as you can see, so this house was definitely a single-family and the current stair going up is from this door. And you can, you could, I, I would assume, you know, you know, access from that stair from the first level at some point. But then there definitely was some kind of reconfiguration going on. Th- this door was added. And then this, the the other, the first level actually was added another door and a, a little stair, so and porch. So there are separate entrances for the first level, which in my opinion, I'll say that's a, a one-family, however, and, you know, and another door was made to access that stair. So they, they basically isolated stair, put a door to it at some point.
That's what you can surmise and what you can prove. And what we're trying to do is get some documentation to get us closer to the correct answer.
Understood, yeah. I just want to make my, my observation here.
Oh.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the upstairs has a path, oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah.
So we're looking for a vote.
So we're looking to vote to, to give you a continuance to see if you can find any additional documentation showing that it was a two-family, whether it be affidavits, or you may even want to check with the building department if there were any building permits over the years, but and then you'd come back at that point and just let us know if you were able to find anything.
My, my, I believe my client had already talked to the building department and also worked with Ashley and proud to, to the hearing on this matter. I don't know if you're able to provide more evidence at this point.
Yeah, actually, last time, actually, last time I talked with Ashley and Norma and also I talked with the seller agent. And his office is across the street to the house. And he, his office there like, you know, more than 10 years. And, you know, on the description, when we bought this house, the description only said was legal two-family, like three words there. Legal two-family, no other description.
Was there two different addresses there? Ever?
I don't think they
Like an A and a B or
They got the number one, number two, I think just the one, one address, no two addresses.
Okay.
Do you, is the, is the electrical system separate at all? Is there a separate
Point of order, we're going to move to the table. I wanted to ask about this, Chairman.
Yeah.
And that motion was to continue. All right, well, we'll, we'll need a date.
We have.
Maybe March 24th is just kind of fact.
Sure.
March 24th, a good date for you?
March 24th.
All right.
So continue to March 24th, given the applicant time to get any additional information regarding the legal two-family, whether it be affidavits, et cetera.
I seconded Mr. Dugan's motion. We'll do so again.
All right, so a motion was made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Done. Done for tonight.
No, no comment after we close the hearing or continue. Thank you.
We'll check the office later.
All right. Up next, we have application 115-21, Gallup, Three Hunt Street in North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove and replace the covered front porch, increasing lot coverage by structures.
So application 115-21, Paul T. Gallup and Ellen Dreyp, Gallup, Three Hunt Street, North Falmouth, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to 240-3C
And 240
Dash 69E of the Code of Falmouth to remove and replace the covered front porch, increasing lot coverage by structures. On subject property known as Three Hunt Street, North Falmouth. Referrals. Revised one from engineering saying that they added drywells and erosion controls as recommended. Revised from water, the water surface is shown and they have no further comments. The rest from engineering. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Beechers Street is a public right of way in this area and Hunt Street is a private right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would be, require filing a permit with the engineering division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of butters or public right of way. We recommend that the board add a condition, oh, they replied drywells, they already have it. Where this site slopes down to the street, we request erosion and sediment controls added, which they did. And we would still put in the condition about they would follow the soil erosion and sediment control standards. Pro- project, the proposed project seems outside of Concom jurisdiction. Fire has no issues with the project. Regarding the water, the existing home has a one-inch service fed from a six-inch main in Beechers Street. Planning, no comment. Health has no issues with the project. There were four letters of support with no objections. There is a lot coverage analysis that was submitted by Attorney Moynihan. I'll go with that.
All right, and Jerry, did I have you on the last project as a voting member?
Yes, I think.
Yep, for this one, I'll be appointing Scott. And for the applicant, we have Attorney Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Laura Moynihan for the record. Representing Paul and Ellen Gallup who are here tonight in the audience. This property is at Three Hunt Street in the New Silver area of North Falmouth. And I've highlighted the property here in the middle. You can see it's in a very well-developed neighborhood with smaller lots than currently are required for lot area. This is a picture of the home. It's a lovely home. The front porch is existing now. It's rather narrow, I would suggest, at about five feet. So the Gallups are looking to expand the porch to have the use of that nice front area. The house was built in 2006. The house was built in 2006, the lot size is 7896 square feet, zone residential C, and the existing conditions, lot coverage at 21.8% now, overall lot coverage is 35.85%. We have a very slight non-conforming front yard setback at one corner of the porch at 24.8 feet, so the application is under the lot coverage, 24069E, as well as 240-3, alteration of a non-conforming structure, even though it's de minimis, still non-conforming by four inches. So, they would like to expand the front porch with the roof, they're going to take off what's, or would like to take off what's there now and rebuild the entire front porch. The setback would remain at 24.8 feet, they would add new landscape steps off the front porch, the increase in lot coverage would be 24 to 24.07%, and by structures to 38.08. So, overall lot coverage still under 40%. This is your elevation, showing the front porch here, front door, the landscape steps, and then the side elevation where there'd be a new portion that would wrap around. So, it would basically give them a much nicer use of that porch area with the increased size. This is the, the architect's plan, showing the dimensions, you can see the narrowness here of the existing porch, and how they want to just bring it out and wrap it around. This is the site plan that's in your file, showing the existing porch location, the expansion area, and I drew up this colored detail for you, so you can just see here, the existing porch is here in orange, the blue would be the new area, the existing steps would be incorporated into the new porch, and then we'd have some landscape steps. So, you can see this 25-foot setback line here, the dash line, so we're really looking at that non-conforming nature of the new porch area being in that one, one slight corner. As you know, lot coverage by structures to 25% by special permit, that equals 1974 square feet for this lot, requesting approval for 1903. I've shown in the lot coverage analysis, I think that there are numerous structures in the neighborhood between 20 and 25%. Over 20%, I don't think there would be any adverse impacts on the neighborhood or traffic, and the size and height is in keeping with the neighborhood. Here are some houses that were included in the analysis, 14 Beechers, which is across the street, 84 Silver Beach Ave, around the corner, 10 Hunt Street, a couple of doors up, 90 Silver Beach Ave, so this picture I included because I thought it was at 85 Silver Beach Ave, but it shows you the proximity of the porch to the street, which I think is characteristic of New Silver area generally. So, I would submit that the change is not substantially more detrimental, it would improve the dwelling and be beneficial to the neighborhood. There is a mix of homes with front porches in this particular neighborhood, and the standards of 240, 216 have been met as a result, and as Mr. Dugan mentioned, there are letters of support or, and/or no objection from 5 Hunt Street, across the street, 14 Beechers, across the street here, and 10 Hunt Street, a couple of doors down. And that is our presentation, if you have any to answer any questions.
Attorney Moynihan.
Hope I didn't go too fast, but I know it's getting late for you all, so.
All right. Scott, on the end, any questions?
No, I drove by this morning, everything was staked out, it looked like it's a proper use of the opportunity for the homeowners.
All right, thank you, Scott. Bob?
So, I like the look of everything, my only question is, the definition of landscape steps as not being part of the structure?
Right, that's the position, has been the position of the town. I have seen other, another application where this board has approved that, so if the steps are not affixed to the actual structure, they are not considered part of the structure, and they're considered a landscape feature, similar to a patio. So, that has been a common practice in my experience in the town.
Yes, I guess my question is, so on our applications, it lists that coverage by structures would include steps. So, if, if there wasn't the landscape's feature, could you still get into the house?
The porch is elevated, so the landscape feature, they're not considered to be steps as part of the structure, inclutable in lot coverage, because they're not affixed to the structure itself. It's not any different than homes that have a mason front stoop, you know, which is very common on a Cape Cod-style home. That's not included in lot coverage, because it's a granite block that's placed next to the structure. So, I do have an example of another case that I had found in your files, where the board had approved this similar thing with the landscape steps encroaching into the setback, but not being included in the lot coverage, that's why people are using them, so that they can, they're not considered steps or part of the structure. They are included in the overall lot coverage, but not the lot coverage structure.
And so, if there was ever a later date and somebody did a remodel, they couldn't use that space of that landscape feature to build on?
It would be considered yard space, so they would not be able to.
They couldn't, they couldn't add that to the structure?
No, because you couldn't go over 25%, so there wouldn't be any way to incorporate a landscape feature into the structure and then come back and say, well.
Well, I, no, I understand in this, I'm just saying, let's say they weren't at 25%, let's say they were under that, and they could, they could build over that landscape structure and still be under, at that point, would they be able to use that, even though that's encroaching farther towards the street?
Well, they'd have to get a, they'd have to get approval from the zoning board of appeals, because you'd be extending a structure now.
I guess is, my argument is, since the, since the landscape feature exists, and it's now closer to the street, so you've actually have a shorter setback, could legally they use that to say, well, they're there?
But if it's, if it's not classified as structure now, it wouldn't be classified as structure then.
So, is it, is it our application that's off?
No, so what happened is, some three years ago, when I started in Falmouth, this question arose, and it was explained to me that there was this description provided that the building department apparently agreed with about landscape features, and it was essentially a workaround, so that the facade of your house met the setbacks, you know, these landscape features were put in so that they wouldn't be counted toward the setback. But what happens is, down the road, the next purchaser says, "My house takes up this footprint, which includes necessarily the stairs," so now the next purchaser would have the right to have any portion of their house be at that closest point of the stairs.
So, why couldn't it be conditioned to state that?
So, can we condition that?
Could I just comment, I mean, I would respectfully disagree, because under 240-3, you can have a change alteration to a non-conforming structure, not a non-conforming landscape feature. So, the structure itself, meaning a deck with, with wood steps affixed to it, would have to be encroaching into that setback, in order for somebody to be able to come back and say, "Well, I'm, I'm going to take that, those steps down and rebuild over it." Here, this is different, we don't have steps that are part of the structure, so there's no, there's no argument that they can take that non-conformity and expand on it. I mean, they could put in larger stone steps or a yard feature, but.
Because as, as it's written, there is no conformity, because they are landscape steps.
That's right, it's not non-conforming, it's not a non-conforming structure. If, if these were wood steps that were in that 25-foot setback.
No, I understand that, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold them to this tonight, because there's confusion on it, but I think what the board's going to have to look at at some point is, our application form says that if it's a step, it's included as the structure, and that's our form.
So, we, we had a specific problem where people had light encroachments, and there was a question about how that was going to be dealt with. So, in my conversations with the building commissioner, et cetera, what we determined was that the front of a house at a door.
Which one, which building commissioner?
This was the former building commissioner.
Okay.
That you needed to have a four-by-four landing by code outside a door. So, what we came up with was that you could have, as long as the house facade was 25 feet from the street, they would accept a four-by-four landing only that could protrude further into the setback without being charged for it. Now, obviously, the taller the house is, the more steps you need to access, so the fact of the material that the stair is made of does not negate the fact that you need the stairs to access the house.
Although we've run into situations where they've raised the grade around there, too, to a swell, I mean, to a worse swell, so.
So, anyway, what the resolution was, was that the stairs, regardless of the material, would count toward the setback if they protrude into the setback. And so, the problem you have here is that the stairs go further into the street than existing, so the stairs could potentially go to the side if they wanted to expand the porch and not be closer, but the problem is, is that, again, the material that you make the stairs of, out of, does not negate the fact that they are indeed stairs and not a decorative landscape feature that would be excluded. Now, it was, like I say, practiced some three years ago to do that, but we've no longer encouraged that because of the problems that we have subsequently.
Well.
And it also counts toward lot coverage, because it's part of the house, you cannot get into the house without the stairs, so you can't cut off a portion of the house and say it doesn't count toward lot coverage, because it's not part of the structure, because it's made of a different material. Many people choose stone steps because they like the look. It's not, it's not a workaround to have a stair be of a different material.
Well, if I may comment, you know, unfortunately, this application's been filed for some time, so first I've heard of this issue, you know, it'd be nice to have notice if, if these are issues, but I still respectfully disagree. I mean, it's always been the practice in the town, and, and there's no formal determination in my, to my knowledge, that has changed that, that if you do not have something affixed to the dwelling, you cannot consider it part of the structure. If you did that, then every project you're looking at, you're going to have to look at front stoops, patios, anything else, and those things are not affixed to the dwellings, they're sitting there providing access to the dwelling, which is what you have here with these front steps. They have to go up to get into the, into the house. So, you know, I'm looking at another.
But not necessarily. I mean, you, you could go into the deck, you could go into the deck with, with stairs coming up and then land inside the deck, if, I mean, if, if you want to split hairs.
So, I'm, I'm looking at an application that was filed May 12, 2021, 53 Silver Beach Ave, where we have the same issue, we have landscape steps that are protruding into the setback. So, you know, all, all I can go on is what the board's approved in the past, and what the building department has allowed for many, many years. If there's some formal determination out there that's changed that.
I guess that's what I was looking for, was there ever a formal determination?
I'm not aware.
I just wanted to make sure that somebody couldn't rebuild the structure over the landscape feature, because now you've changed the setback from the road.
No, because it's not considered part of the structure. No, and you can certainly condition the permit that way.
So, we can.
But it's not part of the structure, so they couldn't build over it.
Bob, let's just condition it.
So, I'd condition it this one, but I, the, the board's going to have to get a definition of it, because it's going to affect every single one.
Well, and that would be helpful for everybody, I think.
So, you know in advance?
Right, I mean, that's, we could only rely on what's happened in the past 25 years in this community, if it's changing, you know, suddenly, one application.
So, you'd be amenable to a condition on that?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Any, any questions? This side of the table, anyone? All right, public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project tonight? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion closed.
Motion closed, made by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second, I'll give that to James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for the board's decision tonight? Thank you, James. Second by Scott, thank you. Findings?
Get the sections down there, Bob.
243C, 24069, 240-216. List the lot coverage changes. Where are they on here? What was the lot coverage change? It's either two later, I can't find it, so pull it up.
I'm not seeing them on here either.
So, the proposed, well, the proposed lot coverage will be 24.7. Finding that the, the stairs leading to the porch for house entry are considered a landscape feature because of material and are not attached to the house.
And required because of the height of the deck itself, required to, to meet code.
What in a finding that there was discussion on the board if a landscape feature, when it steps, meets code for structure? Put that, Ms. Moynihan submitted some other cases where there were landscape steps in the area. Put a finding that the landscape feature is, is much closer to the street than the original structure. Can actually put what the dimension is from the plans?
The applicant's representative was agreeable to put language in there, to condition that as well, I think that it should be part of the findings as well.
I think it was a lot coverage analysis submitted.
Projects in keeping with the neighborhood, no opposition, several letters of support, including a butters.
And they're removing and replacing a covered porch.
Anything else for findings? Conditions?
Per plans, the sediment controls. Building times, the seven-to-seven, no Sundays, no holidays. Construction and vehicles and materials to be kept on site. Put a finding that the project does have drywells, and they're on the plans, and also that that water service is on the plans. Put that the project has no increase in bedrooms, because it's a porch. And put that it would be conditioned that those, that landscape feature steps will only be considered a landscape feature and could never be used for additional lot coverage by structure or application to increase the structure over that location.
All right, anything else for conditions? What are they on?
24.07.
What do you think?
It's easy enough.
Yeah.
Just, it's just a certification of lot coverage at the 24.07.
Okay, anything else for conditions? All right, so those are the conditions made by James, and second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimous, sir. Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. All right, on to our open meeting items, first we have Voting the Minutes, January 13, 2022, and January 27, 2022.
The tabling?
Tabling both. All right. Up next, we have chairman's statement concerning thirty-three Pheasant Lane in East Falmouth. Do you have a prepared statement here? ZBA has been made aware of an article published in the Falmouth Enterprise on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, regarding thirty-three Pheasant Lane and the ZBA. The article reports that, quote, "The town is now working with the zoning board council to try to get all the litigation to go away so that Falmouth Housing Trust can purchase that property and do a lip with the town and the DHCD," end quote. The article later implies that the ZBA was involved directly in discussions with the town concerning this matter. I can confirm that the ZBA was not involved directly or through council in the negotiations regarding the sale of the property or the purchase and sale agreement between the Falmouth Housing Trust and the property owner. And the ZBA has not engaged in any discussion at all with the Falmouth Housing Trust or Ms. Bessonette on this matter. I can also confirm that the ZBA is not engaged in negotiations with or through the town or the Falmouth Housing Trust concerning the possible resolution of the, possible resolution of the pending litigation with the property owner. As this matter is pending in litigation, I am not going to take any questions or make any further statements concerning this matter.
Cross that one off the list.
All right, number three, board to review draft decision of one oh nine dash twenty-one O'Reilly, fourteen Montgomery Ave in Falmouth with a vote anticipated. All right, so the draft decision has been circulated. Does everyone have the time to review it?
Yeah, do you, do you have a hard copy of that so I can go over it?
Yep.
Just so you have it.
Sure.
Because I think we can just shoot right towards the conditions.
I mean, I think at this point in time, I don't know that you need to reduce all, and we don't typically. I guess what I'd say is if the board has any changes they want to make, maybe that would.
Right, so maybe we can just.
I mean, after everyone's good with it, I think we can just vote it in.
Absolutely.
I had a question on.
Yeah, I have questions too, so.
I had a question on condition eleven as to, uh, it says the applicant shall employ best efforts to reduce decibel sound output. That's kind of broad. I think what we, I think the intent was not to cause a nuisance because the neighbor had thought that the AC noise could impact her. I think a better would be the AC unit shall not create a nuisance and be in accordance with generally accepted standards for air conditioning.
Yeah, but there's, you, there's no standard conditions. The, the air conditioner condenser is going to be based on whatever decibel output. They did not present a specific unit to you. And, you know, when you talk about what causes a nuisance, there's not a standard for that either.
There may not be a standard.
One person could be impacted by a very low decibel output versus somebody else may be tolerable to a greater decibel output.
And aren't there manufacturer, um, standards that go with those anyway?
Right, but you don't have a cut sheet, so you don't know what the decibel output is going to be.
But you can get a cut sheet. Excuse me. You can get a cut sheet.
Are you going to dictate what, what kind they can have?
No, and what's.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You know, if you, if you are presented with a cut sheet, you get a decibel output, but then you have to determine if that's, quote, reasonable or not.
No, but we could, we could, but.
Have any basis.
But I think it should be based on the building code and acceptable residential. I mean, I went online and I found some of the specifications will say seventy to seventy-three decibels. I don't know what, what temperature and everything else, but there is standard information.
Right.
All, all my thing is, I think it was a legitimate concern, but I don't know what reasonable efforts are.
So instead of reasonable efforts as far as the air conditioning system, can we say that they use sound buffering material in conjunction with or replacement of that railing?
Yeah, I, you know, I left that open, so.
I mean, they make solid sound buffering material, so they could either add it behind the railing or just use it instead of the railing, but some kind of sound buffering material at the air conditioner where the railing is pictured?
Will that reduce the sound? It'll put the sound up, but not necessarily keep it from coming back down.
So they make, uh, sound baffling material. And if you take a solid piece of wood that's a quarter inch thick or greater and you face it with this sound baffling material at the side where there's not coverage.
Yeah.
For the unit, it will absorb a certain amount of sound.
Thank you. I was, that's right.
So why don't we, so we can add that in?
Yeah, I think that's, make it clear.
As you, as you described it.
Good point.
Uh, my only other change, and it's, it's more grammatical, is where the mention is of the. All right, a second. Decibel. Where is the, um? Um, well, you're mentioning about properly posting addresses required by bylaw ninety-nine one.
Uh, which number are you referring?
Number, uh, so two A.
Close the door.
Okay.
Just use the description that they put in their referral because it's a subsection. Just use exactly what they have, subsection ninety-nine one, a fixing of legible numbers, time limit for compliance that they.
Right, but the, the time limit for compliance is open, so when you say.
Time limit of compliance just means that they, that they have to do it at some point. I just, I just.
So you.
By saying per bylaw ninety-nine one.
Right.
I would just rather use their description of, because it's a subsection.
Right, but what I'm saying is when you say time limit for compliance, you need to express.
Yeah, so you're going to put time limit for compliance prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy like you have on here. And then the same thing with the, um, uh, the show. I mean, the storm right of runoff, you use what they say anyway, so.
Isn't the sign a code requirement anyway?
The what?
The, the numbering.
No, only if you put it in.
No, yeah. So I can't imagine that the building department would issue a final CO on a house without an address. That's like a basic.
So my only other thing, and I don't know if you want to add this in here or not, but you've got, you've got things that are important, like engineering sign-off is required for the issuance of the building permit. You have the other one is complied for the issue of the building permit. Is there anything here that instructs the building department that those issues are needed prior to them giving the building permit? Because it seems that we have the disconnect with the building department, that we're writing in the departments that need the sign-off.
Right.
But then building says, oh, I didn't look.
No, so we are trying to get better coordination with the building department to ensure that necessary departments are signing off on these.
So can we put anything in here that says building department is required to, um, is required to confirm engineering sign-off and the other sign-offs prior to issuing their building permit? So we can actually list the building department in this?
So this is a direction to the building department as to what is to be done. So what we're saying to them is that for this particular application, you need sign-off from engineering. You need sign-off from water. You know, it's pretty standard that they, obviously with a brand-new house, of course, that's going to be the case.
So if the building department says, I didn't look at it, and they say that this is a direction for the applicant for their application.
No, so they, we, so you, you, it's not a value for you to write in your decision, dear building department, please read our decisions.
No, but can you put in, building department to confirm sign-off of engineering, building department to confirm in with us?
No, so what happens is when they determine which departments need to sign off for a brand-new house, you can't avoid the water department signing off on a brand-new house. We put that in here, but that's a no-brainer.
But we've had that in the past, have we not?
Right, but so.
So, so I, all's I'm saying is, it has happened.
Right, so we.
And not, not by you, your fault of you, but it has happened. The building department has not gotten the engineering sign-off.
Right.
And they haven't gotten the water sign-off. So is there anything in here?
Right, so this is, this is the direction to the building department as far as what, what you're requiring. So you're saying to the building department, we're requiring engineering approval and sign-off. We're requiring the same of water. So you don't have to sort of duplicate that effort by calling out the building department.
So do we ever get confirmation from, even with whatever this new system is, from building or anything, that they have done these things prior to them issuing the permit?
Yes, so the zoning board doesn't sign off on a permit.
Neither we don't.
Until, until engineering has and water has.
So they can't give out a permit at all on this until you've signed off and you've checked that engineering signed off and the other people. Okay, that's fine.
So help me God.
The only other thing in here was in the findings about. Premises currently improved by a finagle for me dwelling in detached, nor least of the lot and shed. Uh, I don't know if you do it in number three, but there was testimony at the meeting from the backdoor neighbor that they were using that shed as habitable spa, as that garage as habitable space. That's why it had the windows and the chimney and the.
Air conditioner.
Air conditioning.
Oh, you mean that the former garage was.
Yeah, so maybe you could just put in the findings wherever it fits out, that the for, testimony was, testimony from a Butters was that the garage, and actually I think they even confirmed that the applicant was at one time used. And the only reason I want that finding in there is because even though we're saying no secondary kitchen and it still be used as a single family, there's been a history of it before.
Okay.
Ten thirty.
That's it for me.
Ms. Chairman?
Yeah.
Make motion to go to eleven.
All right, motion made to go to eleven, made by Scott. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Bob, I heard that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
James squealed. He didn't say yes or no.
So with those changes, so, not that I'm holding everybody up, but those changes, I'm fine.
All right, so we need a motion?
So then I would make a motion, um, to approve with the fall, with the revised conditions as of, revised conditions and findings as discussed this evening.
All right, and the voting numbers on this for myself, Bob Duke and James Morris and Jerry?
Yep, so I need a second.
Second.
Second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Up next, we have application fifty-five dash twenty M R L B E L L C, Rebecca Ann Lane, Lot Two, in East Falmouth, approval of a landscape plan with a vote anticipated. All right, what do we have?
Um, I have nothing. I, maybe I'm supposed to, but I don't have anything.
Mr. Maroni was outside. Was he representing?
Right there.
Where is he?
Do we have anything to read from?
Oh, there he is. I didn't see him.
Do we have anything for the actual landscape plan?
I don't have a record of anything being submitted.
So I don't have anything either, so we don't have a submittal?
We don't have a submittal?
No.
Oh.
Mr. Marioni?
I didn't hear what you just said. You said you don't have a plan?
No.
Did you submit one?
Yeah.
When?
Weeks ago, or probably two weeks after we had the last hearing. I submitted a plan with a copy of an email from the neighbor who we had sent the plan to, who thought that the plant, the woman who was here that night, who.
With the fence.
Thank you for your patience.
You've been here for a while.
Oh, you're the neighbor. How nice.
And you don't get four hundred dollars an hour.
Wait until we make a motion till midnight, then you'll really be thrown.
So anyway, to finish what I was saying, is we did send a plan to Mrs.
Shannon Sylvia.
Sylvia first, to make sure that it addressed her concerns. Once she was satisfied with it, we sent it over to the board with a copy of the email from her saying she was satisfied.
Is that true?
Yes, it's the same thing that was.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same plan that you, that you said, yes.
So all's I know is that I, I personally haven't seen anything, and there's nothing in the file.
Well, it's not like we're doing landscaping now, so if it, if it's all right, we'll just resubmit it tomorrow.
We'll just resubmit and change this to a.
And, uh, the exact same thing, so.
All right.
So then I would make a motion to put this on the next open meeting agenda since we don't have a landscape plan in our submitted file.
All right, motion to.
You put it the front nut at the end?
We can take these out of the. Second here. I'll make the motion.
Uh, Bob already did. You can.
Not less, but as long as you confirm with the office in the file whatever you agreed to.
It's the same thing.
Uh, you confirm with the office.
We don't know what's the same thing.
We don't know anything, so you talk to them and they'll tell you what. We haven't seen anything, so I don't know what you agreed to, and the only way to know is if you talk to them and tell you what you agreed to.
I'll make sure that happens. I'll send the plan to Mr. Sylvia, let her send it to an arena, say that was the plan.
Initial law funded or something.
Okay, so do we, do we do the extension?
All right, uh, you made the motion.
Motion to move it at the next open meeting, yeah.
And Scott seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, up next, we have board discussion, application six dash nineteen, Locust Fields LLC, Beach Palm Path and Hatchville. This line is items.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, as you know, um, I've recused myself at every step of this, uh, this case. But I would urge you that if there is any procedural issues that come up, as I am a voting member of the board, that you would consider that if we took up any procedural issues.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll remove myself. You have to come back.
Drink coffee.
All right.
Need a hand with the jacket, yeah?
Oh, my goodness.
And Jerry, I believe, did you file a disclosure?
I filed it after. I don't think I'm a voting member on this.
Yeah.
Because you had, you didn't appoint me.
Right.
But that wasn't in accordance with that procedure, but I was not a member.
Right, just, just needed for the record, I think.
Yeah, you're right.
I think I sent it in. All right. So then, I think I already did the thing, Scott.
Yeah, Scott was appointed.
Yeah.
All right, so that leaves Scott, Bob, me and James. All right, what do we have for this one? Mr. Marioni?
I have no idea. You asked me to come in tonight to talk about something, but I have no idea why I'm here.
Okay, so, um, with my notes on.
So this is just a board discussion then?
Beach Palm Path. All right, so there were items that were un, remaining unresolved, okay? Which included, there was a landscape plan that was submitted per each lot.
Yeah.
The landscaping has not been fully complied with. It doesn't meet the plan that was submitted. Uh, engineering brought up an issue about sidewalk widths being insufficient in certain locations. And then there was not a final resolution to, well, final driveway feeding into the T-turnaround for, uh, the fire apparatus. So those were the three items that remained unresolved.
All right, the biggest issue that I have out of those items, I mean, is the, the T-turnaround, so obviously that's.
Well, the T-turnaround's a safety issue and sidewalks are a safety issue. So both of those would be safety issues, and if those have changed and they're not in compliance, you would ask that they put in compliance with what the original plan was that was filed. And if not, then we would, we would open up a hearing to discuss it. Because at this point, they're going to have to submit a change if they're trying to do any changes. And at that point, that's the, that's the only, that's the only way to do it. We have to, it's, and it's a safety issue. It's not, we, we would have to, we'd have to open a new hearing on those items. On, and actually, I would say on all of the items that came up. That would include all the items that came up in the peer review report. Because there were other issues there too, I remember. There was a, there was something with the water where they had to do a repair.
Oh, the road repair.
And the water department said they're not responsible because it's private. And then there was a comment from engineering that their question at that point was, I don't think there was an expect, uh, an inspection looking at the substrate when they did the asphalt, so we don't have that information. So all of those things that came up in that, in that engineering report, I would put up for discussion at a public meeting. So we would just reopen a hearing for all those items.
And, you know, I think the other part was that the, the landscape plan, there was a.
Well, that too.
Standard plan that was submitted for each dwelling, but as you compare the. standard plan that was submitted for each dwelling, but as you compare the plan to what's there, it doesn't match.
No, so we can add that, I would just add that in and just open a hearing and discuss all the items that are outstanding, including the safety issues and the issues with the, the engineering had. We would actually, yeah, we'd submit
Did engineering have a question about using that, that as a pathway, they wanted a gate or something, so people couldn't drive down there?
Well, they were, it seemed
So the original
It seemed like they were trying to negotiate a change, and my problem with these on, on 40Bs is that there should be no negotiating of changes unless it's an open transparent meeting in front of a board, because we stand in for every single department. So let's say the fire department says
Bob, I agree with you. It's just a simple question of, is the access road part of the things that have to be discussed?
Well, there's really
Whether there has to be a gate or not?
No, so the, so the, so the only thing under the current plan is that the access road was put there only for the construction. The reason you're thinking about the gate is because they started talking about, is there a way we can fix this T, and maybe we could extend something and then put in a fire gate, but that all has to do with the problems that have happened with the T-turnaround, and I don't think they can go back and forth between two different apartments and decide what they're happy with on the turnaround.
I agree, just have it, to be discussed, the hearing. I mean, the neighbors might not want a, a shortcut from a
It's just, it's been such a public process, and we're hitting these on a lot of them, so then I, I, I would just make a motion that we, I take a vote.
Well, excuse me, can I
It's, it's board, unfortunately, Nick, it's, it's board discussion only, so we, we can't even take outside comment because it's listed as
You called me in here tonight to discuss this, now you're not going to let me discuss it? You're throwing out the inaccuracies here.
This is listed as board discussion on our thing, so that's all it is.
So what the hell did you tell me to come in here for then? If you're not going to let me discuss the thing, why, why did you tell me to be here tonight? I got an email specifically saying to be here tonight because you wanted to discuss this with me.
Alls I can tell you is I didn't send you an email, and this is board discussion, and board discussion
Board of Appeals sent me an email.
Did we?
When we put board discussion, that's all we're allowed to do.
I think the chairman should respond, I mean, this, this seems to be, you know
I'd like to at least add some clarification to it while you're discussing it. First of all, we're not complete.
Mr. Marioni, before you get talking, like Bob said, it's, it's listed as a board discussion, and I've, I've stated it before, as a board discussion, it's limited to the board only.
You got, you had a lot of nerve then, telling me I had to be here tonight for this and not letting me discuss it. You think I wanted to come in here and listen to you talk about this?
Mr. Marioni, it is late at night, my apologies for that, and I'm sorry that I'm getting testy. I'll defer to Noreen. Did, did you send out an email asking for Mr. Marioni's appearance tonight to discuss this matter with us? Because I, I didn't, and I wouldn't have that ability.
Yeah, I am sure that I did communicate about the fact that the board was going to talk about this tonight. I don't have a specific recollection that I said that he needed to specifically be here, but that's entirely possible, given that, you know, I know you're trying to get this matter resolved.
Well, since we're going to continue it anyways, he could speak at the next meeting. Oh, it's up to the chairman, it's chairman's meeting.
So, so I would make a motion that we take a vote, reopen a public hearing to discuss all the issues that came up in the engineering and peer review report, including the situation with the landscaping.
So there was not a peer for this?
It was the engineering report, I guess. I just don't have it in front of me. I remember all the items, I just don't remember who
Mr. Chairman, and I guess we all get too detailed. We don't say vote anticipated, it was just a discussion. I'm not sure if we can even take a vote, because the next one we very specifically say vote anticipated.
Well, that's a policy matter, that's why.
Well, I'm just saying that if we get, you know, if we get legalistic, we didn't say we were going to have a vote.
So you can only, so on board
I'm asking for the chairman to speak. Please.
It's, it's listed as a board discussion, Jerry.
So that could include a vote? Okay, that's what your decision is.
No, I mean, I mean, it, it, it could.
Okay.
It could. And now in the future, if, if we want
Then that's fine, you made a decision.
No, yeah, if, in the future, if, if we, if we want to include vote anticipated, we could certainly do that, as it's stated, and as we usually do, it comes down to a board discussion. Not with an applicant's representative, because again, we're getting into, I'm blanking at this
So we get into it
Okay.
We're, we're getting, we're getting into a public meeting at that
Yeah, no, no, I
Things need to be noticed, the, the public needs to be notified and
You satisfied me two minutes ago, three minutes ago.
All right.
Related decision.
So I need a second.
Sorry, Bob, you were making a motion.
So again, I'm making a motion to open a public hearing into Locust Field LLC, 006-119, Beach Palm Path Hatchville, for discussion with all the items that came up in the engineering report, including the landscaping deficiencies and changes in the project.
All right, so motion was made by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, classes unanimous.
Next.
We need Scott back. Scott Zelinski.
I'll go get Scott, and in the meantime, think of tabling this because of the hour.
We have to vote out.
No, we have
It's loud enough, I heard, I was ready to come back.
Thank you, Scott. All right, up next we have policy for developments regarding violations with a vote anticipated.
So I don't, I have not developed a specific policy. I'm guessing that this was primarily put on here.
Was it based on the cease and desist?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was based upon our conversation during the last hearing.
Right.
We made a specific vote for, for that specific project. At that point, we felt uncomfortable voting as a board for a policy regarding all the projects.
Is that something we can take up at our workshop? Is that appropriate to do that when we do, when we do have that?
I think that would be fine, and then in order to
At least get an outline, right?
Right, put the policy in, then you would, you know, bring it up
Get the wording for it.
to a public hearing and, and then vote it, right.
All right, so we'll add that to our board workshop.
Because we certainly don't want to discuss it at midnight tonight.
No.
Nope, all right. Up next, board updates, any, anything for board updates?
Out of respect for the board and the staff, you'll find out tomorrow's paper that I've, I'm announcing my candidacy for selectmen for the May run, so I figured I'd tell all of you tonight. And just, I just feel like it's time for me with, with what's going on and the current conditions coming out of COVID, that I could be of assistance to the, to the, the select board. I wanted to thank everybody, you know, for, for their support. I'll continue on the board. If I am elected, then I'll have to step down, but I wanted you guys to hear it from me firsthand.
All right, appreciate that, Scott, best of luck.
Thanks.
Best of luck, yes.
Anything else for board updates? All right, seeing none, board discussion? Anything up for discussion?
The re-qualification, or no, the re-qualification is done. They are now moving into phase two, which is some bylaw updates. So it would be ideal to have
I know.
two board members, if possible, that would be participating in that next phase.
Do you know if they're going to do the same thing like last time, they're going to do all the hours midday?
That seems to be the case. That being said, I'm perfectly happy to ask if they would consider
Just some of them, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's, it's tough to
It's, it's
break off of the work schedules, and my guess is this is going to go into the spring, and, you know, when you miss the meetings, you take so long to catch up with all that paperwork.
So I don't know if the chair wants to consider appointing somebody, or anybody wants to volunteer to participate. We, in the past, we've had two board members that have worked on that.
Yeah, I mean, I've formally appointed people in the past, but are there, are there any volunteers?
I wouldn't mind, I mean, I, it, it's like watching paint dry, but you do learn some things. And, and I don't know, as an associate member, I think I can be, but I don't know.
Well, I think, I think anyone who, anyone here who's already willing and able is
You said it, Jerry.
I'll admit.
Scott, you're willing to?
Sure.
Yeah, all right.
It'll be your first one, it'll be your first, it will be your first committee thing. It's interesting on your first one. Then we'll see if you ever want to go in another one.
All right, well, many, many thanks to Bob for phase one there, and he put in a lot of time and effort on that, so.
Did the attorney general accept the codification?
What?
Wasn't that about a five-year effort total?
Oh, yeah.
So we're hoping
Scott's going to back out now that you said that.
You could always resign, I'm told, I don't know if that happens, but you could
Well, Scott and Jerry, I think
No, it's a lifetime appointment.
Yeah.
Think you guys volunteered yourself, and if you wanted official, I'll, I'll appoint you, so. Thank you, thank you for offering.
Did the attorney general accept the
I have no final word yet.
All right, up next we have the board workshop, Saturday, February 26 at 9:00 a.m., and added onto the agenda will be a policy for developments regarding violations.
Mr. Chairman, can we, can we ask the zoning administrator to send an invite out to the select chair and, and vice chair for that meeting?
Sure, if you could do that, all right. Be happy to have them.
Well, they have
You could tell them there's food.
Yeah, yeah, tell them we do a nice little breakfast, maybe that'll persuade them.
Or let them know what they can bring.
Even better. All right, future adjourned items, anything?
No.
All right, the board's next meeting is February 24, 2022, 6:30 here at Falmattown Hall. Meeting adjourned.
Sad.